When you get your bad luck, I think you ask me to go on the video. Video of the century is the only part one. Or I think whatever voting you have automatically. You didn't try out that.
Yes, okay, so um yeah, I was thinking that I thought it was a bit nicer.
For sure.
And we also have other people.
Yeah. Yeah, are they also? Okay, let's see them. A lot of colleagues.
Yes, it will be a lot of. Genetic law and picture group.
Hey, Michael.
And pictures.
Thank you. We are all on it.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. This is why I just want to. But also I felt that maybe a new.
No, maybe you have. Deborah, and so, but is there going to be one? Or are all three going to present? Shalit, Aladdin, three years two. Go ahead, maybe you're going to get this.
Sure, we're actually going to take her.
Okay.
So this is the start of the report. And then she'll pass it over to me because that we do share as our party here.
That's good. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much.
And then so just to clarify, some of the team that the group team members for our big line is to be promoted in panel. If they do not accept the petition from a panel, that every time. But I'm sorry. Yeah. All would be interested in that. Okay. I'll remind. Yeah. Thank you.
Okay, perfect, thank you so much.
Thank you. Let me get that. That is perfect.
Yeah.
Sorry, any other things? Have a cool. Raise your hand. I bet it myself, but I haven't like. Hey, all of our vision. And then to qualify, if we could share that there any of the. Are you going to go see your person?
Yes.
I think your heart located in the back. And you know, for your.
TJ, I have one here from someone. You have mine, I think, but this is someone who's on their way. Thank you. Thank you, TJ. It's like, she's new, so she doesn't know the process yet.
Guys, you have behind it. Hey, guys. Now.
Good job, good job.
Hi.
Good to see you.
Good to see you. No, not in here. Yeah, we did. We're good. That's a good idea. Also, it is, yeah, it said to connect at the public works. Like the permit. It's, yeah, awesome. I'm so happy. I'm excited. Yeah, I did sign her up. We're all signed up. Thank you. We have a new guest. Hey, guys. Well, I'm glad you're all in here. Sorry for the ASMR. I'm going to. Okay, apparently I think they got a week long street closure. And so. I'm gonna be addressing that. Why is that happening? And they're building something. They better have the permits for that, but that's building and services. They just give me the furry eyeball. If I talk.
Good morning, and I'm just asking for clarification on Deborah, on which side of your team are.
Looks like there's a lot of stuff going on with it.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Sure.
Is this working? Sorry. Yeah, they do public comment first. Can you guys hear? Is it lag? Can you guys hear? Is everything good with this? Can you guys hear? I know it's like a whisper, but. Do you have dusty? Okay, good. Hey, dusty boy. I think it go over. Is that you, Carter?
Good morning, everybody, and welcome to regularly scheduled meeting of the board. For Wednesday, November fifth, two thousand and twenty five, Mr. Knight, please see bowl and dispatch.
Thank you, President. Thank you, President. Thank you, President. Charles, President for temporary commissioner, commissioner, partners, the president, we do a bar margin, twenty five city, three representative. Richard Lloyd, President Kang, we have. Six public conferences on in the hearing room. And.
Very true, sir.
And we have four public conferences on the virtual platform. One multiple that is on the first platform, and one single that is on the first platform. We have no need for council, uh, committee. For the record, I would like to inform those who are on the virtual platform and those who are here in the hearing room. That if you have an item that is being continued today. It is item two on the board's regular agenda, that is the street closure we have a lot of. Uh, for the attendees who have joined on virtual, thank you for joining me for. We have to do a tier of the board. That you would.
Oh, thank you. Always down on the show to you. Loving your TikToks. Use it with the. If somebody could put the links.
I'll give you time to find us after three coming present in person. And with that, we can go ahead.
Thank you very much. With that, we will get started with general public comment, which is an opportunity for the public to address the board and public interest item. And will be provided up to one minute per person up to accumulated to over ten minutes. But the general public comment segment of each regular meeting. Testimony shall be limited in content to subject matters which are within the jurisdiction of the board of public works. The board may not take any action on any items discussed during the public comment period. And get started with in-person speakers. First up, we have Michael Ackerman. And then followed by the.
All right, go, Michael.
I now feel should verify that your procedures for commissioning public comments do not comply with the Brown Act. If you have a best suggestion to carry your policies to the coming or to others. Vows like yours and theirs do not do unnecessary paperwork. So any major differences should be replied that something is very wrong. And then normal law or civil oversight for this body and others has failed. I urge you to send personal letters to the governor asking for temporary oversight by the National Guard and District Guard. Anyone connected with this step is misleading or inappropriate. We were managing huge amounts of money, which is obviously attractive to criminals. There are thus all reasons why this will be a weak solution.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, David.
Motherfuckers in the case, number two twenty three, CD zero two four, two seven, KK, D R. Jeremy Williams, person, C O, Bonnie, Jessica, and Una, official capacity. Now you motherfuckers, you've been knocking it. It's against the law to make criminal threats against a member of the public for addressing dickheads like you. Shit holes like you attorneys and other motherfuckers who don't understand the law. That you're just as criminal participants in these allegations. One, retaliation against the forty Q S C since of nineteen eighty three, motherfucker. And one about fifty two, wanting one of the Bay Act. All this is legal term and for the record, he's the asshole who went to jail and was a criminal that has far license. Peter Thomas, suck a dick like this one.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, Otto.
Thank you. Think I could take it out. Good morning. I'm here to talk about what I'm always here talking about. You know, we had a recent permit with that, um, you gave a recent permit to Scientology for Halloween. They, of course, violated, you know, so many things about it. And now they're getting another one, I believe, for a whole week to shut down a street. You're shutting down a street that is, um, you know, for, for, but they don't even follow their permits, but they have it now. And it's like a street that leads to three hospitals and the metro stop. And what's that? Why do you have to shut it down for a week? This is their IA, this is their, I know they're doing a big fundraising, but it's all on their property. And they are building these massive towers with their people who are not getting paid real wages. They're getting paid slave wages. And I wonder if they're even getting it inspected. I'm not sure. But if they're not, you're, you're, it's contributing to all the illegality of what they're doing. Please reconsider. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, Nora.
Okay, guys. Yeah, thanks.
Hi, good morning, board. Good morning, President Kang. Good morning, everybody. I feel like I know you now. I was a child born and raised in the cult of Scientology. You guys gave them again another Halloween permit. They're using this to recruit children, family members. I was born and raised in this. I know this is happening. I watch it every time I go to protests. Uh, you have your forty seven dollar a week paid members, such as my father, washing dishes in the bottom of the Blue Building after being a member of forty five years or more. They use these events to recruit these members in. They use the R one visa to get people off during these permanent events that you guys allow, like Winter Wonderland and all of that. To get family members interested in Scientology and just getting them to sign up by a simple email or phone. Is allowing them to, to be having to attach themselves to Scientology. Based on some view that they're gonna be have a good free experience through your visa, right through the church. This is a manipulative tool, guys. Please stop giving them the permits. Revote the Alron Hubbard Way permit back to North Orlando.
Great job. Awesome.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, Avon.
Yay, we have a new guest.
Hello, good morning. Um, I am a day girl. National Academy of Scientology, they serve proper education. They pay their, um, their amount of forty seven dollars a week. Um, they have kids sign million year contracts to keep them in the organization. And they also run the purification run down for kids, which is where they pump the pool of ice in, the saunas. Um, I'd like to, uh, please encourage you to look into a method of using permits for their events and disclosures. Simply use the ice and for recruitment of people and children. Um, as well as changing history, I'll run a way back to, uh, the current issue. Make your time in reconsideration.
Great job, Jay. Great job.
Thank you very much. Technically, in person, we'll transition to a virtual platform.
Okay, guys.
Other case, was there a speaker card for C S? I apologize for actually.
Did I miss Speaker? Is there a speaker in C S?
Uh, apologies, we'll transition to a virtual platform. We'll start with Devon.
Awesome, guys.
Fine, go ahead.
Thank you, TJ. The permit two twenty twenty five, eighteen ten, twenty twenty five. It's an AIS, uh, event. That's the event that I was talking about. It is on the property, not on the street. If they close the street, it is completely unnecessary. They are, and then they started building the humongous tents or martis or abidins. On the first, without a permit, without any inspectors, the schedule. These exceed what you normally covers by a spectacle event permit and require building the safety permit. None exists. They did this all without permits and they will add the event on the eighth. The neighborhoods are going to be putting up with late night hours of the B fifteen meeting with the equipment.
Thank you.
Great job, Yvonne.
Style of life.
Yay. Missed that finish.
Good morning. I have a question for the entire board. At what point does respect for freedom of religion cross the line from impartiality to favoritism? When you continually allow permanent events for a group that you've already been for two years telling you about its abuses. You are buried in the sand. I would like to support activists such as Audit L A and Who Comes and shows up at great difficulty. And now great personal red, time to time again, for more than two years. To ask you to investigate these matters and look into them. This is a group that allegedly sneaks out and puts out, uh, fake no parking signs. In your red zones. So it's fine, and you take your head out of the sand and start investigating these abuses. Thank you.
Oh, thank you. I just downloaded. That was great. Thank you.
And we'll move next to him.
Hi, TJ. Like I said, in my last call, the last meeting you showed, that it's Halloween every single day on Scientology. It became again Halloween, the Halloween event. And it was very scary because there was no by lane. They were armed guns that were prohibited on L A and lower events access to the sidewalk. And the situation is so, it is so much that they actually had to call the police to all the sidewalk for the public. There's plenty of evidence that is something really different to also regarding this, so I really hope that those stuff they actually not matter. That's all. Thank you.
Great job, Miriam. Thank you.
Gigi.
Good morning. Um, I want to talk about the Halloween permit that you guys gave Scientology. Why was the sidewalk blocked? Why was there a huge barricade preventing people from going down the sidewalk? I'm pretty sure that the permit says that the sidewalk is supposed to be open to the public. Why were there two hundred guys standing in front of this barricade laughing people? Why did the pass have to be called? How come when L A P showed up, they said that it had been opened up? And the officer had to open it up himself. He had physically moved the barricade. How come Scientology didn't move the barricade? Why are you guys still giving them permits? They don't follow the rules. There was no fire lane. If there was a fire, there were so many kids there and so many adults that could have lost their life. Speaking of kids, why were there kids rolling pumpkin heads who are running assaults in their homes? Why are they allowed to sell that permits? You guys, please back them on permits. Thank you.
Awesome job, Gigi.
Public commentary, and that includes.
Yeah, I used to say.
Use, uh, the remote, uh, attendees have indicated that they wish.
Maybe they didn't see you.
It does exhaust the ten minute allotted block, however, there is an additional.
Oh, yeah, maybe they, there are three of them. I think you can get in.
Use your T for public T. Would you like to have a public comment this morning? Trigina, would you like to have a public comment this morning?
Yes, please, thank you.
Whatever.
I'm, uh, also calling in on the use of Scientology. I want to say in support of Audit L A first, the fact that she's being very angry and attacked for speaking out. And all she's talking about is permits. Imagine L A would attack people if they go after real serious issues. The least you can do is handle permit issues. They keep, uh, abusing the permits. You keep giving them permits. The lady who spoke about the, um, Jen, who spoke about the, um. Oh, gosh, I can't think of the name of it. The sauna that put the kids in. They put the kids in those saunas for hours, days, for months. Months is very harmful. It's damaging to their bodies, their permanent bodies, all the knives that are put on. And I wanted to call because I don't think we should have a street being after a cult leader. We don't have a Charles Manson way. Why do we have an Alron Hubbard Way? This is scaring people that want to come here for the Olympics. I've had numerous.
Great job, antics. Thank you. Hi, Astrid. Hey, Professor.
We are not receiving your audio input here.
Hi, sorry.
Oh, okay, Karen, you go ahead.
Yes, sorry, I will go first on you and then, yeah. Um, so thank you. Your articles, I can speak about these, partner, El, El one Hubbard Way, when you have these men. And to block government, public, including the wheel chairs to get through. They have people who believe to get access to a public street. And this is not the first time this has happened. Why is this allowed to happen time and time again? It's unacceptable. People are calling in for nothing else to explain. So when is this going to stop? When does the city act and do something about it? Public work, not private property, and residents deserve to see it breathing. Please start taking this seriously.
Please start taking this seriously. The last act is, if I are, if I am talking about the case, and I'm supposed to be speaking, thank you.
Yeah, Antics, thank you. And antics, that was not crap at all. You did great. Thank you. Oh, you did great.
You said Nora.
Yes, thank you.
Would you like to go?
Yes, I would like to make a public comment, sorry to hide you off.
Go ahead.
Uh, I am also a survivor of the cult of Scientology, I was born into it, I was enslaved at the Blue Complex there, on L-100 Way and Sunset Fountain, uh, for three years for being gay. The workers there, who are putting up this, uh, event, not only don't get paid forty seven dollars a week, they get a reorder pay, because they're being punished, they get twelve dollars fifty cents a week, which taxes are taken out of, uh, they get eleven dollars and thirty seven cents, have your taxes removed from that quote-unquote paycheck, for working fifteen hours a day to set up these events. The event coming up is the International Association of Scientology, which is their religious flush pile, which takes millions of dollars and puts them in offshore accounts, in Cyprus, in the Canyons, or knowing the country where they hold billions of dollars to wage their campaign against people who call out the truth about Scientology, being, uh, the most innocent.
Thank you Nora.
Yes, great job, Nora. Thank you.
So we will, um, given that we have exceeded our lot of time, I will now close general public comment portion of today's meeting and reform with multiple agenda item public comment. The board will provide an opportunity for members of the public which to speak on more than one agenda item during multiple agenda item commentary for a total of three. This is the only time to speak on more than one agenda item, and please identify the items I can speak on when you are called. So we will start with in-person speakers. How do I?
Good morning again. Um, I want to start with the minutes, okay? I, I have to say, yesterday I went to the Bonk meeting, and then, uh, we went to the disability meeting, and they do it differently. Like, I do concede that the Brown Act doesn't require it, but I think it's important, like, it, it, like, today, it, it kind of hit me in this, like, in the gut. And I know Nora's story, but to hear it again in public comment, that she was put in a prison system for three years as a very young person because she's gay. That's not going to be reflected in your meetings, in their minutes. But if that doesn't haunt you, it haunts me. And that's, Nora is one of the stor-, one of the people why I fight so hard. And yeah, we're fighting for, you know, it's not that we just want, like, the, the thing with the minutes, it's beyond us, it's for anyone that comes. We're passionate, I've been here, like, they said, I'm, I'm being fair game, I'm going through hell, but I can't shut up, because it's like, the stuff is wrong. You know, and it needs to stop. And the best thing to make it stop is to have the city say, no, we're not going to be complicit, we're not going to help you do this. And that's what I ask. As far as the next thing, it was the one where, I'm not sure what number it is, but, and where we're, like, where they're asking for more money, I believe that's the one. It, it's again, I, I, I see you guys are doing better with asking questions. I have said, this is my favorite board seated, I've been coming here, you guys are like the third board, I think you're the fourth president, Mr. Kang, and I think you guys are doing a good job. Um, I just think there needs to be more, besides asking questions, there needs to be more no's. There needs to be more accountability from the beginning, like, why aren't you guys getting your, why don't you have the proper request? Why don't you know what you need when we give you the bid? It just feels like there's some, not shady with you, not even shady with them, but just like, like, it's like we just throw it together and say, okay, we'll figure it out later, but that's not good, because then, it looks like, it starts, I'll say, at a million dollars coming out of our budget, but in the end, it's going to be two million. I mean, I, that's not the, I, I forget the exact numbers, but I'm just making the point. And that's not good, like, I want you guys to do better. I want you guys to absolutely be the best public works board that the city has ever seen. You know, and not just for our, what we're coming here for, but just for overall. Because you guys hold a massive purse, the purse strings of all our infrastructure. And we just want a little bit more, we, we, you know, no rubber stamping, we don't want rubber stamping, but we want it prevented, like, and before it gets to on the agenda, this stuff can be sorted out, so we don't see so much of this. Thank you.
Thank you very much, next speaker is Nora.
Hi, so yeah, I just wanted to, if we could really talk, I'm talking on the minutes, if we could really just have a record, uh, I don't know how they used to do it in the forties or fifties or sixties or whatever, if they even had meetings back then, but the times have changed, I have a child coming out of the cult of Scientology, right? Times have changed, we're growing up, things have changed. The, these should be, there should be some sort of reflection on the minutes that say, public, people came in, it's very important that public come in from the city on whatever subjects and talk about it, and that should be there showing, reflecting on the minutes. People calling in, Nora called in, James Mustard, Jamie Mustard, who, I hope you guys are all reading his book, Child X, he called in, that was a blessing. This is something that should be shown in the city records, at least just on the recording as a statement. Just Jamie Mustard called in, reflecting, uh, Alain Hubbard, permit, possible revocation. Things like that. Laura talked in person, came in person, spoke audit comes every time, asking for us to, whatever it is, revoke Scientology's permit, let that reflect in the minutes, please. We're doing our part as children coming from this cult, so the city can please just have a record on, 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 not just my story, but everybody that comes, what each person had to say.
Great job.
Thank you, next, uh, moderator.
I don't know, you can talk on minutes.
One minute, please.
Um, I just want to echo what Laura said, if I could be listed in the minutes, um, when these things are brought up, I think it'd be very helpful. Um, I personally, as an outsider, um, moving to Hollywood and walking down the street, I would get, um, chased down by some of the, um, members there trying to get me to go into their building, and they would have tables set up with these weird knee meters, trying to get people to take tests, which is very, very bizarre, so I think if you could list, um, when we bring these things up in the meetings, then in the minutes, I think that would be very helpful. Thank you.
Great job. Thank you.
Baby, would you like to do multiple? Multiple, you're up.
Watch language with her. Jen did great.
Going to work with this motherfuckers is making my life miserable. I'm here to confess my sins. That L.A. City is an organized criminal enterprise of corruption. Why is that? Why do I have to wait five fucking years for that fucking access grant off of the L.A. Times building on the federal court?
Thank you, have a good one. So proud of you, Jen, you did amazing. Is it, is it cra-, I know it's crazy, right, it's like, but, they're listening, they were listening.
It's really good to talk in person.
Right? Yeah, like, you get to see them eye to eye, like, the eye contact, especially since, they're pretty decent, like, eye contact, and they're like, they're really good. Like I said, this really is my favorite one, the last ones, they used to roll their eyes, they used to be so nasty, like, they really did get a good, so, yeah, so I'm really grateful for that. Um, this is the main one, but let me sign up Jen.
I think, oh, okay.
I signed you up. See if they call. How do you know? This is just the basic, um, the regular, um, uh, what do you call it, um, city council. Okey dokey.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you, I'm so excited. It's like, they'll be like, yeah, and they're like, oh no, it's growing, there are more of them, we're coming. Which is what we need, what they need. Did they do it yet? Did they call me yet?
Did they call me?
Just get in line, they're not calling anymore. Hi Popeye. Hi Teddy Bear. I don't even know what, what's available.
Thank you. Of ours.
Good morning. Good morning, which item?
Good morning, general public comment, please?
Okay, one that's on.
Okay, I have child, boarding rates, and the cult of Scientology, I just want, again, I'm in a hunger, I want to make sure you guys know the infiltration of the city, the finances, everything, street closures, not really helping the homeless in the neighborhood, not allowing Scientology property to be used for the homeless, when they are completely zero to actually help. They do not take action, they have infiltrated, made human trafficking children and adults still to this day, who can't pay forty seven dollars or less a year to infiltrate the city with their PR, whether that's on CPAP meeting dinners, or whether that's through the city officials actually having positions on the board. Please check your connection and relationship with Scientology. Please do not have your friends and associates who vouch for the fact that is literally amusing members on a daily basis, get the city out of Scientology. Thank you.
Good morning, which item would you like to speak to?
Hello, good morning, um,
General.
I just wanted to speak about the, the, uh, comments here, I'm a proud parent, I graduated from Hollywood in 2014. Um, I often question and advocate that Scientology and the L.A.P.D. can do this. My child is a student, has an amazing L.A.U.S.T. school, other than a wonderful community there that is just very heartwarming and quite understanding, uh, for people who spend healthy to deny the power of the station, which I think is a very big problem. Um, I encourage you to look into a preventive community service in front of your friends, and for their relatives, because they use that to improve people or children. Um, they pay their, um, members forty seven dollars a week. Um, they have these tiny, million-year contracts to keep them in the organization, um, and they also run the, the pre-ification run down, which is basically a sauna where they pump the kids full of nicotine and, 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 and multiple hours a day, uh, which is very intimidating, so I encourage you to please, uh, look into, uh, that matter and think of your time.
My turn. Good morning. Yeah, I, I didn't get to, I didn't get to. Okay, um, the police one, I see we're giving more money to LAPD, and, thanks, oh, sorry. Oh, thank you. Sorry, I see we're giving more money to LAPD, and it's not that I, you know, I don't support, you know, the police and everything, but they have the lion's share of our budget. And then we have, um, LAFD having to, um, sell the baked goods and, and toys and cups and stuff to help with their budget. And I know you're allowing, you're saying you're allowing agencies to, to do that, which is great, but why does the fire department have to sell baked goods to, uh, you know, help fund them? And, but, the, the group that gets the biggest share of our, you know, our, um, budget, you know, is getting more, and, and then, you know, it's just, I don't know, it's just really weird. And you took from the fire to give to Medicaid, but then you're giving, taking from the homeless to give to LAPD, it's just a lot of weird stuff, I don't understand it. But, um, and it's no slam on, you know, the officers, I'm just talking budget stuff. Okay, and then, um, when it comes to, and that's a Mr., I mean, and the ones that, with Mr. Lee, I had to remind Mr. Lee, he owes me an apology. So, and the ones that are his, okay, because his names are on it, until Mr. President bangs the gavel and says, Mr. Lee. Okay, I will, but until the, you know, Mr. President does that, you know, I have to say no. Okay, and, um, when it comes to all the housing things that, you know, issues and stuff, um, you know, I just want to let you know that, that Scientology, but when you're trying to help housing, right, you're trying to get people into housing and not out of housing, please, yeah, that's the ones with the thirty-one or whatever with the houses. Right. Yeah, okay, yeah, the, the REAP program, I really, and, you know, and I, you know, I forgot to shout out Smoke and Scan because I know he, he corrects me when, the way I say reap, I don't say it right, and I appreciate that, keeping it all straight, so thank you Smoke and Scan for that. Because I don't know what it's, I never know how to pronounce it, anyway. But then I mentioned that Mr. Lee owes me an apology, in spite of REAP issues, he does. And when it comes to the REAP or, because I think I was calling it REAP or whatever, but, um, there's how, like, people who are being forced into homelessness because, for whatever reason, at Scientology, okay? And that's unfair. Here you have these programs where you keep putting, um, houses on and off things, and dealing with housing in people's houses, and there's people thrown into the streets for five hundred dollars because they became disabled or something. I wish you would deal with the, the, you know, like, that gap, or there's elderly that can't function, they can't do their job anymore, and they're kicked out with five hundred dollars. So, in this REAP program, I wish you would give those houses to people who are being kicked out of Scientology, um, because they are disabled or old and can't do their hundred hours of work. Thank you. Public comment. Um, I, did I mention that Mr. Lee owes me an apology, and I think that Mr. President should bang his gavel and say, come on, it's been long enough, just do it already. But if not, that's not the case, even though he's not listening, see, Mr. President, you owe me an apology now too, but maybe you're working, and maybe I should let you get off the hook. But I'm here about Scientology, I'm tired that you guys are giving them permits, and even though we come time and time again and say they abuse those permits continuously, okay? They are preventing the public when they're not allowed to prevent the public. They are, um, they, Laura got assaulted by one of the member's ch-, children, and they, and the, the guards send the kids inside the building to avoid any kind of consequences, you know, for their actions. Okay, that's called obstruction of justice. And guess what happens? You guys keep giving them permits. Why? You know, they're not abiding by any of them. Like, there's not, and right now, they're building some big structures, and there's no permits for that, there's no, there's no signing that they're getting any kind of inspections. There's going to be an injury someday, and you still owe me that apology, Mr. Lee, and shout out to Smoke and Scan. Thank you. You didn't, no one? Man. See, all got ripped up.
Next would be.
Oh, thanks, I saw. I love that name. Did you talk yet? We just made it. Yeah, thank you. I know. Why is it so quick? Probably, are you coming back? Probably, yeah. What ones, that's homeless? Yeah, I, I wanted to go over there, we probably will, if they want to. Okay. Yeah, I want to go check over there. And I want to, um, yeah. I'll go see what they want to do. I definitely want to go to the, um, what do you call it, the? That little fa-, yeah, my uncle wanted to go to, um, DOT cafeteria sometime. Is it? And maybe if he wants to, oh, really? I'm willing to do that too, if they are. I'll have to ask them what they want to do. Okay, all right, I'll go see. I wish Dusty could talk. Y'all did so good, and he's like, I know, she's good, we got, I know. It's, huh? Yep, yep, and then maybe they'll, maybe she'll be the one that gets in the, you know, we need to listen to them. Right, she might, that, yeah, that mama, Jen, I think, I love the name, yeah, that. Yes, it needs to. That's, I fell, I had a bad fall, yeah, I got injured, yeah. I'm still hurting pretty bad, but it's like, no, we got to keep fighting this. Yeah, I, yeah, I, I, I had to recover from it. I, yeah, my, yeah, my cat was just diagnosed with cancer yesterday. We don't know how much time she has, but they say, like, keep her, right now, like, um, keep her comfortable, they're going to do, like, drain her stomach or whatever, and just, you know, try some treatment, and, so, yeah. I know. So, but yeah, I'm still, but I can't miss two weeks, even though I'm still hurting, I'm like, uh-uh, we got to stay on point, stay on track, especially because they're giving, like, more permits. Are you serious? When was that? Like, no one? And they were, dang. It was yesterday? Oh, we were here, but we were at the police commission. Uh-uh. Are you serious? Because when, when we came over here, yeah, it was all done, like, wow. That's crazy. Like, what the heck? Did, oh, because I, like, that's crazy, because we did come over, and we hung out all day, yes. We came looking for you, because I was like, maybe it'd be a good time to do, uh, did you? Because, yeah. You got all three of them? Well, we could do the thing where, I, like, I, I read it into your thing, and you, okay. You know what, well, Friday, are we coming Friday? I don't know, because sometimes, um, I would say Wednesday's better, because Wednesday's usually, because Tuesday's, it's hit or miss here, because I'm over at the police, but, no, it's for, um, it's just, you know, like, it's just, like, for, in here, because, yeah, because they gave me my pep talk, and so, you know, it's just. They were coaching me, like, and I got the, he agreed to, like, because I wanted to, I was asking if they think I could get an interview with the, the CIO guy, and they're like, no way, but they're like, yeah, but, but the one guy's like, no, you got it, like, don't let, don't be defeated, you got to go try, go follow your dreams, you know? And then the guy said, yeah. Oh, yeah, we had so much fun. Oh, yeah, we had fun. And they said, yeah, they, they, they were like, yeah, come on in, like, of course, the press are welcome. Yeah. I was dancing with some guy in my chair, yeah, I was, I was dancing. I know. I know, it's like, the boss. I know, we need it. That's crazy.
Okay, and then one's the other one?
Okay, huh, we had to go. Two o'clock's the next one?
Okay, I don't know, I think I have to bring her to get her.
They, I want to go across the street to the Little Farmer's Market, Herman's, like, does anyone want to do lunch? I don't, what?
You're gonna, what time is it right now, ten forty-five?
Yeah. Sorry, guys, I'm missing chat.
So the next one is?
At two.
The next one isn't until two?
Yeah. Bye, it's good seeing you.
Eleven, I have to go, I have to go do a commendation for, I'm just kidding, I have to report a cop, I have to file that Alex guy.
Well, that's, we could go, well.
I have to do it down here.
Yeah, I'll go with you, huh? Oh, sorry, sorry. Don't haze me. Hi Teddy Bear. I know, I love Dusty. All right, see, we complied, can you please? I love it when he howls. That's his public comment. Oh, hey, Nora's streaming us, let's say hi to Nora, hi Nora. Say hi to Nora, she's streaming us. She's streaming us, yay, thank you Nora, thank you for calling in. Take it. Yeah, oh my gosh, that was like, that hit me hard, like, when she, I'm like, oh my gosh. Yes, and that's relevant. Yep, she did it. Are you going in, are you going to the, across the street? The Little Farmer's Market. You're going to be at two o'clock meeting?
I, I really haven't, hadn't planned it.
Okay, then we'll catch, we'll catch you up with you. If not, I'll see you on X. Hi Popeye, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good, this is my friend Jen, this is Popeye. Yeah, you see it, right, like, right? The spinach, yeah, the eat spinach? Do you? I love it. I have to have names for all of them, right? And I call him Teddy Bear, because he looks like a teddy bear, although he's kind of tough, though, like, he, he stands up, but, he's like the, all right, bye, guys, bye, uh, dimples, that's dimples. Okay, so. Oh, oh, this guy says, we're all Scientologists, oh, I guess we're undercover Scientologists, fighting Scientology for pretend. Okay, okay, yeah, we're, yeah, okay, we're, we're, you. I was like, hey Nora, it's like, I love it. I know, I'm so proud of Jen, it's such an amazing day, I'm so excited. You are a natural, like, I know, I'm so proud of you, right? Yeah, it's like, it's all spoken, yeah. Yes. I, that's, I know, it's, it's scary, yeah. But she's, yeah, but that's, we need to, I know, were you, I think, I think we threw her off, because I signed her up for all, all agenda, I said, oh yeah, I'm like, minutes, but I didn't know, because I didn't know what the, but you did great, like, yeah, yeah. They do, and it's a, it's a great way to, she got right on it, it's a great way to add more stuff, yeah, like, improv, improv, improv. Yeah, and, and talking about the kids, I was excited, and I loved having everyone on, like, Style Audit, you know, it was, she comes, she's starting to come more, I love that. Yes. Oh, I do too, it's amazing, and everyone did, it did amazing, all the accents and, yes. Yes, and, and they can hear it. And T was like, kind of, you know, jumping in, I love that. And Smoke and Scan about, here's, that's right, Smoke and Scan.
Yeah, you were that crazy guy, shoved your arm out the window like that.
And Scientology, uh, Nora. Gunja girl, everyone did amazing, antics, like, everyone, you all did amazing. And it makes me, I know, like, when you're actually inside here, it feels, it feels joyful, yeah. Yes, like, even though we go first, like, but the, they hear that, like, that backup, and then they come in, yeah, like, what they said, what they, like, it just adds on, and that, oh, I love it, it's, so you guys are rock stars. I know, I, I see, couldn't get in, this sucks. Yeah. Yes, yes. They were good, I don't know about when you were, but when I was up, they were like, huge. They were good, I don't know about when you were, but when I was up, they were like, he was like shaking his head, yeah, like, uh-uh. They know, that contact, that bill, so it's good to do in person, too. But what a great, I'm happy with it. You are too antics, all y'all. Oh, yeah, Tammo. Yeah, that's what. We need to find that structure, we need to find out what. Right. What if we set up a meeting with them and find out what is the structure, what is the process? Okay, so we need to, we. You're gonna get us accused of being Scientologists. Are we using? Right, right, we're over it. Amen, right, that's right. Down Scientology, exactly. I don't trust them either, Guns a- I know. That's right, now Scientology is cool, okay. That's right. Yep. Appreciate it. Yep. Well, I just stay on, I know. It's just so silly, gotta just stay on track. And just tick, ticks to what we're doing, because it's like, yeah. Yeah, of course, with love, yeah, we. We know hate in our heart. I don't hate anyone, I really don't. Like, I don't even hate this, you know, even Kirsten Peterson, I don't hate her. I don't hate any of them, like, I, I, I hate what they're doing, I detest what they're doing, yes, resent, like, I'm not saying that, but like, the hate, like, I don't wish any ill on anyone, I don't wish anyone to like, be die or, you know, like, right, that, right, right, right. Right, and I'd rather get to her head and like, say, you know, maybe you need to, you know, maybe she'll reconsider, she opens up her eyes, maybe she's blind, you know? So, I, I still always focus on that, like, even these top level ones that, I don't know, maybe they can wake up, you never know. That's right. He didn't give up enough, but, yeah. But. Took it out, yeah. No. Exactly. Exactly. Keep fighting, yes. Yes. They are, they are. Yep. Yep. I know, I'm being accused of being like, Scientologist. I know. I want to go across street, so, yeah, well, for me, it's like. Yeah, uh, I don't think, like, I wouldn't be as fair gamed as I am. I know, it's a. Oh, the Conrad! I never know, yeah, I didn't even think of that. I know, Dusty's such a good boy, I love him. Yeah, no, he definitely deserves to be in prison. I just don't hate, I just don't have hate in my heart, though, for anyone, I just can't function that way. Yeah, what is it, like? Yeah, but see, that's what they did too, at the police, and then we couldn't come in. Yeah, it would have been closed, yeah, we just, yeah. I know, because I thought, I was like filming to see, you know. Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, just go up and. I guess that's funny. I agree with your antics. Actually, he should come out and turn against it and speak the truth. Alright, yeah, I want to go across the, I want to go see the fair, then what are you doing? Yeah. Yeah, at the police headquarters?
Fifth and Central, no, no, no.
You can't do it at headquarters?
No, I have to.
Okay. Oh, is it Central?
Yeah, because it's off-duty, so it needs to be.
Oh, no, 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 but, no, 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 you're wrong, no, no, that, no, that's not at Central, that's at headquarters, that's the film unit. I believe the film unit.
No, 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 to report his behavior.
It has, I, no, they told me, I mean, I got it, I sent it to you.
I still want to report it to the police, I don't think.
No, it is the police, I'm talking about the headquarters of the police. That's where they're filmed, no, not Film LA. I'm talking about LAPD Film Unit.
Right.
I'll meet you down there, because we're.
But they said that is done in that division. In downtown.
It is, the film? The film, because I, because I thought they're, that's talking about if they're modern, because I thought the film unit was here, like, at, um. Or why don't we go to the headquarters and find out? I'm glad you did, because, yeah, he's retired. Well, because if he's retired, it would go to the film unit. Yeah, he's, um, so, I think we should go to the, right here and say, because he's not, he's not a cop anymore, so we can't file against him as if he's LAPD, they're not, they're not gonna take a complaint against, it's the film unit, we just need to find out where they're located. But we're right here, we can find out where their actual office is.
But LAPD wouldn't.
It's LAPD Film Unit.
But regular LAPD, if I went there, they wouldn't be forced to take a.
No, because he's, he's retired, oh my god, hey, why don't we do the top thing? Yeah, 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 that's, wait, um, twenty-two, go to twenty-two. Hey, sorry, are you going down? We're going up, sorry.
It'll come back again.
You gotta see this, okay, I'm so glad Jen gets to see this too. Yeah, because I think we could go to headquarters, we need to find out. We're going, yeah, hey, we make a song. Hey, Yvonne, all the way up. That is a song?
Yeah, the hook is, we're going.
All the way up. Oh, here we go, we had to go over here, we had to go over here. Okay, we had to go up here. I don't know what that is.
The musician, Moby?
Oh, she's, she knows all the stuff. I am so like, out of my decade, I'm so out of my decades. That's what you need, we need to, yeah, but. Did that, did that go, did that? You can rent, I think, in here, I think, I think. And make it like a. Yeah, there you go. No, but it's a retired cop, um, Yvonne. Sorry. Oh, there you go. Yes. You guys are going up more? This is twenty-two? Okay, do, do you think we'll make it? Oh, you're going down? Oh, no, we're going up.
It's going, going on it, but it's gonna eventually go down.
Okay, yeah. Oh, yeah, because this way it goes in here. Yes, we rescued. Okay, so now we need to go up to twenty-six. I know, I'm so excited, we could do this, it's like. Road trip. And, and I hate elevators, so you're distracting me, because normally, I'm freaking scared in this elevator, so, so it's like, I'm like distracted. Okay, I, yeah, yeah, Yvonne, I was told that it has to be done with the LAP Film Unit, so I, we just need to find out if that's true. Hi.
No, 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 back up.
Oh, it went, oh, one more. Sorry, yeah.
We're going all the way up.
We're going all the way up. This is so cool. I know, I think, I think I've heard of it.
It's like in the back, it's like, we're going all the way up. We're going, so the hook is, we're going all the way up.
Okay, we need to, and then. Well, first we take the little tour around here, and then there's one more elevator. We had to do. Yeah, see, but there's one more, oh, there's, oh, here's the other elevator. Here we go, we had to go one more. We had to go one more up. Yes, this is, wait till you see this, this is.
Can I?
Yeah, yeah. Crazy view right now. So far, look at, we're literally above, we're going up more.
Yeah, one more flight, one.
This is wild. One more floor.
And three elevators to get there.
Three elevators to get where we're going. This is wild, oh my god, how adventurous, the world of, yep, you're good, and then twenty-seven?
Yeah.
Okay, we're on the twenty-seventh floor, guys. So, look at the button, literally says twenty-six, twenty-seven.
Well, I know, like, one old elevator, just, I don't know, you know, what.
I think, can you guys see? I think, can you guys see? Wait, let me, hold on. Yeah, there, yeah, we're on. Like, this is, like, yeah, because like, yeah. But then you hear, I'm a Scientologist. Yes, yeah, 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 yeah. Guys, let me show you, because it cut out on the internet, but look at, we're on the twenty-seventh floor, what? Look at. This is where we are.
And then you can find the stuff over there, like, there's.
Oh, that's cool. That's crazy, I hope they can get the view here. So I don't drop it.
Not today, I don't think you're gonna see the ocean, you can see.
That's wild. Twenty-seven floors up, guys, pretty cool. I think the highest uh, building I've been in was the sixty-ninth floor or something.
But we're gonna go to the other one one day, right, which is seventy.
But it, it was the Trump Hotel, in Panama City, when I was with my boss, when she was flying out there for like, medical stuff. Wow, okay, so. You've done this before, audit, right? She had just been trying.
I've been at numerous dinner parties in there.
I believe I've never been up here, this is so wild. Somebody said, I see your house. Look at that. That is crazy. Yep. Right below us is the headquarters, where we do our Tuesday morning Police Commission meetings. Wow. So wild. Crazy, right, guys? I mean, it's. Okay, one last one over here. Okay, let's go in here. Mosque. Oh. Stanley Mosque. Yes. There's the Hollywood sign. Wild. So beautiful, look at, this, like, this building looks like literally a box. A box of glass, doesn't it? I mean, they are a building, but that's just wild. Wow. They left me. Aw, hi, antics, hi, Yvonne, hi, everybody, hi, hi, hi! Will you see the one-on-one freeway? Okay, let's see. Wow, goes all the way around, wow, so it's full view all the way around. That's okay. It smells so good. Look at the freeway, you can like, see the whole freaking freeway go up, that's cool. Wild. Wild, 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 okay. Oh my god, it's a, it's a little David Miscavige door. Little cutie. The final view. The final countdown, what if I dropped the phone? You guys would have an interesting view falling. It's the final countdown. Wild. Sorry, I'm not the best at keeping it still. No, it would just be a quiet drop. Okay, wow, so pretty, so pretty, so pretty. The downtown. Hi? Hi, Peter. Hi, antics. It's the final countdown. Are we just going in circles and more circles and more circles? Okay, so number fourteen is this building, clearly. Eleven. Fifteen, right there. Law Library. Number thirteen. Right here. It's the Law Library. Okay, Chad, I should probably give you back to audit, before I get carried away with filming. Okay, one more. Uh, hi, yeah, Samiriam, we know, uh, Nora, we knew, hi to Nora. I found you, I found you guys. Is this where, is it closed? The restaurant and all that?
Well, that's like events for, say, like, say a neighborhood council, or they want to honor, but the mayor, you know, so they, they have these big dinner events, I've been to a few, you know, these spots.
Cool.
With written laws, the humblest in the state is sure of equal justice with the great.
The city came to the being to preserve life, but it's just for the good of.
Does this sound audit?
Never opened a Harley, or no, the, the, the tree, being able to.
Okay, we're with the government. They mean so much from the, the citizens of democracy and give so much back. That government is the strongest of which every man feels. Oh, man, did I read it?
You sell the part.
Pretty cool, guys, right?
And that's what we're working on, this.
Gotta get this view, Audit, put the, put the paper down, just cuz this looks cool, yeah.
Yeah.
You're in, like, the picture frame, it's cool. Doesn't that look cool? Yeah!
See, that's fun, that's a cool, alright, cool.
Yeah. I know, I'm like, didn't even know about.
I don't know you can.
That was awesome.
You never know.
Got to hit the button again.
Let's see, let's see. See, I'll use this for something.
Yeah.
I'll put a weird thing.
Well, we could come up here and you can do it.
Now I know.
Get, get, like, the real good sound equipment.
Yeah, but I like this.
The echo, yeah, it sounds beautiful, it sounds.
Isn't that how it sounds in?
Wow, that was amazing. That sounds great.
Okay, which one? Twenty-two?
There, you have a request for the Halo game theme.
Wait, look.
You go first.
No, it's twenty-four.
Oh. That is wild, I don't know what the Halo game theme is, but. Yep, Saint Kathy says it's beautiful, it is, that's really cool, we should go up and do that.
Look it, listen, chat, listen. Twenty-two.
You go first.
It's so pretty, see, yeah, so I would.
Thank you.
It would actually be good. Next time, I'll bring my, uh, little microphone thing.
Hi, no worries.
Uh, and then we just go and just tech.
Yeah.
And then we'll know what in my, when I make a song, if there's a sound that I really liked.
Yeah, then get bring in that real, yeah.
We'll be videoing it, I'll know what floor it was. I'll be like, oh, this was in the.
That, but that sound good, cuz like, when they open the big stairway, that's all acoustic.
Yeah, it like, ah, puts it in the hole.
Yeah.
It has like a stairwell going up into the center.
I wanna do that with a speech, though, and like, have it, like, echoing.
I need your help. The kids are bending. That would be cool.
That would, yeah, we should go up there sometimes.
And I just play it right. There's my two-minute Republican comment. Are you listening? Do I have to put it in a song? So your ears can feel.
Oh, cuz this is three, can I go pee real quick?
Yeah, only cuz you rhymed. This is three, can I go pee?
No, I need to pee.
Do we need to get off on three?
I do to pee, like, that's where the bathroom is.
Okay, I'll take care of that.
Oh, look, something's going on, yeah, thank you.
See, we have this routine down.
Yes, we do. Soon we'll get our, and you might need that, do you want me to? Okay, good. We'll see what's going on here, who knows? Maybe we need to meet some people. Hi, chat, Audit's going peepee. Right? I love the, I'm always, like, uh, filming the floors. Um, okay, did they already close? Ah, ha, ha, ha. See, these ones are a little too big, when I sing, it's like, ah, you can hear it go all the way up. Had to do it. Ah. Ooh. Or even down hall, here, when you're down hallways. Ooh. You can hear it all the way down there, isn't that crazy? Ooh. So wild, so I would put a microphone on that end of the hall, and then I would come down here, and I would go, ooh. You hear it go all the way down? I have the ears of, like, I can hear everything. Wild. Ooh. It carries all the way. So, yeah, that's actually a great, I'm excited about that, I'm gonna bring my little microphone. Oh, my god, yeah, we have a show right here in the middle, just right here in the middle. I mean, I'm down, anybody? Anybody who has any connects for booking in the city halls, I'm absolutely down to do a show. Just, uh, let us know, Laura.fm, www.lara, L-A-R-A.fm. Send them to my site, oh, my god, literally, send them to, oh, my god, can you hold this? This is funny, guys, send them to my QR code. Ah, this is great. Hold on, let's see. Tell me if any of you can get, yeah, hold it, yeah, perfect. Tell me if you could get this, guys. Bam. Uh, I should be, I should be putting my flyer up for my show December eleventh. Um, but until then, this is where you can follow me, on YouTube, Instagram, help, send cash, uh, Vemos, all the Cash Apps, all of that. All here, Linktree, bing, for the Laura FM. And you can hear my music and all that.
Yes.
That's fun. Back to the world. Hmm, this will be good, and then we can go outside, no call yet?
Nope, no call yet.
Okay, good.
I should pull your flyer for you, if you wanna show me.
Oh, cool, it went through? Oh, nice, yeah, here, guys, we're totally using Audit's chat right now. There's the flyer and the info. Uh, maybe on my Instagram, is my, is that from my Instagram? Nice, okay. You want to be here? Or do you want to talk to me? Dream love. I love how this hall looks. You guys get the hall. Laura is actively being targeted in fair game, please support, oh, thanks, Antics, yep. Scientology literally is trying to live up my ass. Gotcha.
We protest, we protest because we care about the people that are stuck in there, you know?
Yeah.
We really care, that's like.
Right, if it wasn't happening, we wouldn't be there. I was saying, uh, protesting. If it wasn't happening, we, what would we be protesting? Exactly. Okay, guys, back to your lawful owner.
We're promoting Laura's show.
Oh, good. Good, anytime. Yes, I like what Antics said, Laura's actively being targeted in fair game, please support her. Exactly, at Laura FM, thank you, Antics for that reminder.
Okay, so now we're gonna go in on the street?
Yeah. If you're down with that, I'm down with that.
We'll figure out.
We'll go to the police headquarters and find out where.
Yeah, or I can even call them and say.
I have the number, I gave you the number, I emailed that whole thing to you for LA Film. And I know that LA Film, I think, is there, because that's the same people that gave us the Father's Day protest. Permit, I think. If I'm not mistaken, we're learning so much about the, um, the, you know, the, how the, um, the city works.
Yeah.
Even the city doesn't always know.
And everything.
With everything, cuz I did not know this, like, I learned something new, that, um, A, with, with, um, the, the Media Center, because it's considered a vendor, an approved vendor, they don't need, so the LAPD does not need permits to film there, so that's how they can do it sneaky.
Do they need to show that they do?
I don't believe so.
Like, do they need to show the free?
Oh, yeah, I guess so, yeah. Probably, yeah, that's what we need to find, start looking, so I did do a CPR on that.
People work with Scientology and permits, and the police.
Just to let you know, um, on the third floor, ladies bathroom, the disabled toilet is, like, flushing, but it has a constant sound of leg water, so I think it might be a disaster soon. Alright, thanks.
Thank you. I got right up for a fancy.
Yeah, just made, and then we had to come back for the two o'clock. You gonna come to the two o'clock or no?
Uh, no, because I can't, yeah, no, because.
Okay, so I might skip that one, too. Okay, we're, we're working.
Come to me, keep coming, keep coming to me, and then you. Or is it better for me to do that?
I don't know, I think that kinda worked, yeah. I know, cuz I lost all my cards, I lost them. Alright.
It's hooked on your shoulder, is that okay?
Yeah.
On the head, dig? On the head.
Mr. Herman wanted to have lunch with us, I guess. I think. Oh, they're passing out checks, oh, they're gonna have a. Hi! I want my strawberries. But I didn't have strawberries for two days, I'm like, I'm going through my withdrawals.
What is Audit addicted to, the city, media, and strawberry?
Strawberries, oh, and thirty-six month gouda.
Yes.
Like, and fish, I could, I could live on that, and coffee, that's it, I could live on that. Yeah, and a Japanese store, yeah, I mean, I could just live on that, Daiso, you ever been to Daiso? Oh, my gosh, you had to go.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, it's right above, like, we're, um, norms, it's right above it, we had to take, we had to go earlier. We have another coupon, we should use it, and go to Daiso. Oh, yeah, good coffee, it has to be good, I, I know, I have my, I have my, like, coffees I like, I, like, if, go to Starbucks, but then at home, I have my certain, like, way I like it, and it's just perfect.
How do you like your coffee?
I like it with, um, like, I get the real, like, I get, like, the Starbucks, like, Sumatra, cuz I love that one, and then I, I like, I know this sounds weird, but, cuz I used to be a purist and love half and half, but I like the, the guy, certainly, like, a lot of the coffee mate powder, and then I put organic sugar in it, so I only have, like, one a day, so I was like, I like it light and sweet.
Yeah.
You know, but, um, ooh, is this where the city one is?
Yeah.
I'm gonna get my strawberries, I think strawberries, should we eat first and then get strawberries? Or let me get my strawberries first and get out of the way?
Where are your strawberries, over there?
Right here.
Oh, okay, we would like some fruit, too, so we'll.
Okay, we'll, we'll go with it.
You wanna get food and then get them after?
We could do that.
You wanna get food here and then go?
Sure. Any what?
That not.
What him, what was that? I don't remember. Oh, the Musa.
Dimples, your, your dimples is on your right.
Oh, yeah, he's a cutie pie.
Ooh, mac and cheese.
That sounds good, I, I wonder if I kinda want, like, a Hawaiian plate.
That's, I was gonna say, your spam, your ham, whatever.
No, but this stuff, like, look at this one, like, they have all these dinners, like, these look good.
Wow.
Let me see. What is chicken Irene?
Are you hungry for anything that you want? I'll share, I'll share some of these. I'll want two.
Hi, how you doing? What's the samples? Oh, the mango, is that the mango habanero?
Yeah, it's very spicy.
Yeah, I want that, okay. Okay.
Spice?
Thank you.
You want spice?
Oh, yeah.
Teriyaki, teriyaki.
Oh, okay. Mmm. What is chicken Irene?
Irene is the Chila Poblanos, garlic, and sour cream sauce. You wanna do a sample, too?
Mm-hmm. Can you get it on shrimp or no? That is delicious.
Wow. What do you, what do you? Where's the teriyaki?
Thank you.
You wanna have the hot, I can make hot, hot, too.
All right, I'm gonna do, we can share the chicken and shrimp, that plate?
Alright, so give me a bite.
Yeah, yeah, and, uh, maybe extra sauce, cuz that sauce is so yummy, and can I try the other sauce as well?
What kind of sauce?
This one that you just said.
That is good.
Is it spicy?
No, not at all, not my. They have salmon. I, I, I'm not crazy, I like salmon, but.
No, I'm just saying, it's unusual.
No, yeah, it is, I mean, but I wish they had, like, the other kind of fish.
Yeah, 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 okay.
Yeah. Alright, go ahead, you order.
So that's good, if I just do this shrimp and chicken like that?
So you wanted that chicken, that meat chicken?
Oh, I wanted it both.
They're both?
Okay, not shrimp, but maybe that chicken and the other.
Okay.
With the little noodles and rice.
Okay.
Is that okay? With the veggies? We'll share that, and then, um, we'll get, which one?
How's the dragon fruit one? Okay, I'm, yeah, you go first. No, they are, yeah, I'm separate.
Whatever you want.
Yeah, no.
I'm, I'm, whatever you want, did you already order?
No, no, I'm letting you go through first. Oh, okay, I want, can I get, um, the shrimp and chicken? I don't know if I want the habanero or that garlic, can I, is it possible to get both sauces? And then on the shrimp, like, maybe shrimp, maybe this sauce on the shrimp, and then get the habanero chicken? Okay, and I want the noodles and, um, the veggies.
No rice?
Um, no rice, but can they put, like, a little bit of, some kind of sauce on the veggies and the, and the noodles? Um, or whatever, is that the only sauce you have that's, or like, terri, a little bit of teriyaki on the noodles? On the side, okay, perfect, and then I'll take, uh, dragon fruit lemonade. Miscavige, huh? No, just get it, I got it, no, cuz I got my butt, yeah. Those samples are good.
Yeah.
Okay, and then I'll pay, yeah, I'll, I'll get mine. But I want the dragon fruit, is the dragon fruit one good? No, I want the, I don't like passion fruit.
Oh, dragon fruit.
Yeah, no, yeah, cuz I, I hate, I hate passion fruit. And papaya, those are like the two, oh. Here, you ready?
You really don't like passion fruit?
Or papaya.
They, they taste like pineapple.
Really?
Like, it's so delicious, I can't even stand it. A little bit off, but isn't that pretty good?
Yeah, it's, it's better than what I've had, yeah. Yeah, do you have, um, uh, um, yeah, straw?
I have.
Thank you. Okay, thank you. Thank, thank you, what?
I didn't wanna get that. I have the permit, I have the guy's info, I have all that.
So I think we go to there, they can at least tell us where to go, and if we have to go to the other one, we can just walk down there, it's not that far. But I think we don't, cuz it's right in the, it's right in the Skid Row area, and it's not that I don't mind Skid Row, but there, like, we got a little bit, uh, there was a little asshole. I'm six. Yep. I can see Laura performing here. Wish I'd get you a.
He was shocked that I.
Oh, six, that's me, that's me.
I was like, one of my. Yeah, that's, that's.
I'm six.
Give them, give the tag.
Could I get the sauces on the side, too, like, huh?
The ticket?
Oh, yeah, here we go.
Right here, Jen.
Here we go. Thank you. Oh, do they have forks and stuff, do they put forks in here? There's places that sit over here. Hi. Yeah, should we eat first and then look? You sure? Herman, I think, is saving us a seat, I think. So we could eat and then go look, and get strawberries. Yeah, yeah, well, you know, man, I'm loving everyone, I ain't gonna. I don't know. For Dusty, I love Dusty. Hey, Herman. Thank you. If you met Jen, this is Mr. Herman. AKA Mama Jen. I know it's great how many called in today, and I, I appreciate everyone that did that, I don't know how I'm gonna eat and do this, may have to. That was crazy. Yeah, they, they got us, they said no one showed yesterday, we were all at the police thing, thank you. Hold on, I'm gonna do this. I might have to, I might have to put a shout out to Mama Jen, that's right. Might have to. But Nora comes back down, I had to snag my um, my uh. I left it in her car. Because I'm, I, because I don't have my thing, I don't have a thing, so I'm gonna go off and then we'll go back on. Alright guys, we'll be back on shortly, I'm just gonna pause it, I'm not gonna go off off. Actually, I'll le- I could leave it on, like, the microphone and stuff, so you can hear us. And then, but, and I'll leave the camera on, but you won't be able to see anything, well, I'll put it up to the sky.
Might be interesting, a little ASMR.
Those are the parents that were getting on their nerves.
There you are.
And that's the best thing about being an American. You're not breaking any law by getting them some of their nerves, they don't like it, quit your job and let somebody else do the job. When I got him as a puppy. He had a, an allergy reaction to his body, he had all these bumps all over the back of his skin.
He had like a munchkin, too.
Yeah, it come to go, but it's only when I give him human food.
Yeah, no, because it's so much salt, pepper, some garlic pepper, salt, all that, dog, always, and onion, always. My father showed his wife. Peppers, old potatoes from old plants, you get, no pipe them, boiled to the pot. My child, my little fucking child. Mighty, talented. I know, floppy, he's a brainiac, he has a, I almost lived a husky. Yeah, even he's afraid, that'd be so amazing. He had a brainer.
Female, right?
What did she say, what did she smile, what did she fire to you? Are you ready for a vaccine?
I, I love when they do that though. What service your dog do, I go, I don't know, ask him. They look at me kind of funny, I say, well, you're asking a question that's not a part of the two questions you should be asking, so. So you learn the language, talk to me, if not.
Get it, Ada, get it in there.
Is this just every day, or do they pay?
No, just day, every Wednesday. I don't know, I'm going to guess first, one for sir, maybe they get a permit, and then if they ever stop, someone else will fill in. I've seen a couple days.
I'll yell the attorney one by right now, and I yell that out loud. Don't be afraid, dude. I didn't mention this to you, but um. What are your uh, did you, what are your, they, they were gonna put a restraining order against me. Saying that my, that my, my tongue, my tongue, uh, my language was, was scaring me.
Do they deal again, or are they in the process of?
Well, I went to court last Friday, they dropped me. They dropped me without, without explanation, two, two days prior to the court date. So, I went to court, got, told the judge about the retaliation, intimidation. He goes, my case has been dismissed, I go, I get it, I go, but they can still open the case against me, they go, well, like I said, the case was dismissed, I go, well.
Uh, with prejudice or without prejudice?
Uh, without, without me. They could redo it. And I said, well, that's good. It's not my person, it's not my promise, from the city.
So why is there a harmless shrimp, man, he's like.
For who?
The shrimp was like pissing everyone off at the police.
Oh, yeah. I don't know, he finally, he wanted attention, he got it.
Well, because he signed up, he didn't answer a bunch of people, and then he got called hurt.
I was listening to uh, how you recorded it, and uh, the black gentleman that was in front of you, he was screaming.
After eight, but he was mad.
He got all excited, yeah, and they're, they're angry at me, you know, if you want to make them angry, go ahead, I go, but you better back it up. You better back it up.
Because he's like, I get low, because he said it happened so many times. That's true. I complain. I think that girl is uh, that's the part that's sweet on him, the bunch of farts.
And when I started fighting these people, I was fighting them about cleaning, cleaning the city, right, with a long, long time. And then it went from that to protecting and fighting for homeless people. And then once they arrested me and made those big charges against me, then uh, everything went backwards.
That's, that's scary that they do that, I know.
Herman went into a fighting mode. I gotta let you guys interpret it, now they're raiding me.
I'm telling you, he's trying to get me arrested, so far, thank God, you know, for, for siding up with a big man, here's their theater, they're trying to say that he's unincorrespondent. That's not impersonation. Yeah, because I don't go up there, I mean, you watch the TV, you know, everyone is separate ages. How much the deer?
No, that's uh, Zep. That's a sausage. They got nervous for it. I got nervous too.
When we were getting back, we were hoping we were like. Did you hit the ground, or like? No. That's a county? I know, I just, I just realized it right now, as she was up on the floor, and they're watching, I was like, wait, that was the lady holding the same jacket that she's wearing? And she was like, I didn't realize that she was on the floor, and she kept like, I didn't see her, she was so helpful. And, and then our, it really got mixed up, and I was like, I'm like, you want to try, if you're going to stay like to have coffee, and I was just, mommy all like, so freaking out on her. She was like, she takes it in her mouth, and she's like. I was like, okay, I was like, I could do it, she was like. But she's the one who's trying to get the bill going, where you can't uh, protest within three hundred feet, she's the one who authored that bill, her, Bob, so. We need to stay on her for that, and not let her forget, because our cross basically does really good, and everyone showed up that day.
You gotta remember, you can still protest, as long as you keep moving. The moment you stop, now you're creating a barrier, so that it's.
That gave you say you're continuing to do that.
As long as you keep walking, like, they have a video, you're walking, walking against your shit.
That's what I do as a new building, I even went to sidearm, close, I'm like, you can't tell me I can't fucking walk. I have that on my camera, by the way, when the fucking security, sign, all the security guard was closing it, when he saw me coming, he was rushing to close it. So I walked off the property, on their property, because I was like, I was like, Alex, get the fuck out of my way, like, how dare you move the thing right when the cop.
Listen, Dean, yeah, but he said they have to let us through.
Go around the corner, and then you, and I was like, oh, I went around it, I was there, property, he's like, oh, you're trespassing, and I.
You're not trespassing until they give you, they have to give you a chance to.
Never trespass me, dog, dog. Then I turned back, and I was like, now I'm being harassed, now they're following. Now their phone, now their with. They had that big fucking, baby dog. Yeah, and they're trying, like, they're complaining about me being scared of him, he tried to chase somebody for walking with their dog.
Like, so, yeah, you better believe him a little bit. Yeah, sorry guys, I'm back, can you hear us? Hey Gina. Oh, you're getting shout outs. I'm gonna save that for dinner, or give it to. Oh dang, I didn't realize I had teriyaki sauce in there. Gina, it's a dusty, it's a dusty. Oh, he's so sweet, I just love that face, those eyes, it's like they've seen him, oh man, it's like they're. Wise, right, doesn't he look like, he looks like a little wise old man. What's that? What is it? Oh, oh man, yeah. Oh, oh, right, that is funny, he's like. Who is that? Let's go check it out, it looks like, it looks like uh.
It looks like the guardian of the truck.
Probably, yeah, they probably are, like. I don't know, let's go check it out, I wanna get my strawberries. Go when you're done. Okay. Gina saying hi. Yeah, there were some great comments today. I know, like, Gina just came in, and like, no nerves. It's like, this the minute. Yeah. Yep. That's why we need this more, you know? Right. Yeah, she is. Well, she saw, when we were protesting, she saw a kid walking out. Hey Jojo, hey Fingy, everyone. Yeah, I'm saying. Yeah. Is that Hugo? Is that Hugo? Is that Hugo? No, Hugo. No, it kinda looks like it, I, I, I don't have glasses, I need glasses. Well, because I, I'm waiting for my glasses.
I called them, I called them all, and I was like, if you go, the, the neighbor, like, the wife, the wife called me, called me home, like, something, and he parked the car. I looked at him, he's like, right there, and he's like, because I had already.
Did you? That's funny, yeah, they could do more. But you know, the guy from East Hollywood is running against him, so he need, we need to give him. Yes, yes, and the guy who was on um, can't think of his name right, what's his name, the guy from East Hollywood? So he knows all about the issues, because. Yes, yeah. Well, I'd say we, we need to interview him and ask him what is his, what his stand is on Scientology. Yeah, why don't we go up to his floor and ask for a meeting? Like, in person, and say, we want a meeting. Yeah. It's like beep, 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 that's true, like, they're all turning right, that's so funny. Yeah. Tactical alert, tactical alert, switch to tactics. I'm taking all, I wanna get my strawberries. Yeah. Because they're still getting rid of all the fingerprint dust and all the, shredding all the evidence. Yeah, because he's in prison now, so. Oh, he's falling asleep though, he's like, he's like so ready to chill, like, I need a nap. A good, uh, rub and a good music, good company. That's a sweet cat, that's a puppy dog. I don't know if I'm gonna go to the 2 o'clock, I might not. Because we're gonna go to the police. Yeah, it's like, right, I don't ever remember it feeling this long, it used to be like 1, 1:30. Yeah. And then, yeah. It does, and so I, yeah. I didn't, I gotta go get some stuff, oh my gosh. I love you Dusty, I love you so much, you have no idea, I just love you. I do. You're such a good boy. Yeah, so, yeah, I think I'm gonna go, after we go there, I'm gonna head home.
I guess you have been bringing in your chances and then I pulled up. We pulled up in the courthouse against.
Oh, really? So when this, this is not, this is a different First Amendment claim?
Uh, yeah. The mayor from El Monte was threatening a patron from El Monte using gang members.
What? That's crazy, what's the case, I'm gonna look it up. I wanna get, I wanna read this, like. So Gabriella Leos versus City of El Monte, I'm gonna check that out, man. That's crazy. Can I take a picture of it?
But it's 167 page complaint.
And how, was it, is it still open?
It's fairly long, but.
Did it, was it ever, has it been adjudicated yet? Found guilty or not?
Mayor was found guilty, paid $185,000.
Wow.
And then paid the attorney fees.
Is it the same mayor that's, um, with you? Harassing you?
Not different.
Oh, okay.
This, this is the, this is where the lady found the attorney to help her.
Oh, that's the lawyer?
Yeah.
Wow.
Did a good job in screwing them over.
Well, if they got the experience, might as well grab them.
And then I wrote a complaint and I CC'd it to FBI.
Dang, you're just going hardcore. Wait, I gotta get, I forgot, hold on guys, I gotta get my charger. Yeah, that'd be great. Okay. Lisa, yes, she wants to do that so bad, she wants to. Probably some kind of union thing. I know. Hold on guys, I gotta get my charger.
It's only 11:57. That door ain't gonna open till 2.
Sounds like they're gonna have a union thing, something with the unions. Well, we can, but we just didn't, we never finished, we. They, yeah, you have to have a permit. Yeah, they do. No. They have a permit. No, that's a union, they have a permit, trust me. Yeah, no, they have a permit, I'm sure. It's, yeah, they have a permit, yeah, yeah. A, a union, yeah, it's the unions. But we can get a permit. But we can get a permit. No, there's, you can do it there or in the front, I don't know if they have this except for, well, we can ask. All right, we can ask, can you help me plug this in again?
Orange County now is going out for the homeless. They, they passed a ordinance to make the mortgages by keeping them out of the neighborhood.
Wow. Really, the 4118? Ah, thank you. All right, I'm gonna go get my. I wanna, you guys, when you're done, I'm gonna go get my strawberries. Okay, and then when you're done. Take it, take it, why not? All right, I'll take. Does Jen wanna take it? I'll take it. Or give it to someone, yeah, if we, let's see if one of that lady's around. I'll give it to Bike Guy. I'll take it. I'll give it, I'll give it. No, well, attitude is, I don't wanna throw it away, because I could get, give it to a homeless person, that would be. Okay, that, that's good, but not, I don't wanna throw it away. Okay, so I'll eat mine later, or I'll give it to Bike Guy. I know, but it's like, I can't, the door, then it will. And I always forget.
Yeah, but you're not holding it like this.
I know, that's true. So we wanna go look for someone? Yeah, it's probably the unions. Yeah, I don't, can't tell. Oh yeah, that sounds like it could be that.
Have you heard from Andre?
Who? Oh, Henry?
Henry.
Um, not really, I mean, just a little bit, like, I know, yeah, well, I saw the, where you guys served the. That was awesome, that was fun, I love that he's doing that, that's great. He's the one that served the papers for Henry, um. Yeah, no, 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 for Riverside, for Stacy Moxon. Yes.
The only ones that gave it a hard time was the last one, which was the DA. A lady comes out and she says, well, we're not supposed to accept anything, but it, uh, finally I just said, but look, man. You spend more than five minutes trying to explain yourself, just sign the paper.
Yeah.
It is complimentary, so we can leave, otherwise, you have, you have the copy I left you there. But I just need you to sign my copy that you received, that's all. So that was the only one they didn't stamp, she signed it, it's still legitimate.
Oh, is that a sheriff's officer, I wanna find out what they feel about Villanueva. Yeah, oh yeah, well, he said on TikTok, he said, Villanueva said, he. I will, I'll do that today, he canceled it. Yeah, yeah, yes, you saw that, yes, that case, you saw that case? Really? Can I see that stuff, can you show me that stuff? Where? Oh man, I wanna see that, because I will, okay, good. Probably. The guy from the Bonk Commission. Yeah. We need to bring his words to that meeting. Oh, please, I need to see that. Are you guys still here, are we still on? I'll be all sort what that is, oh man, we need to. We should, well, I am in the process of doing that, but I need more stuff. Yeah, I've done that, I did that already. I did it, yeah, I already did it.
Because Henry said he did a public request regarding, uh, you know, you can call in.
Yeah, that they have all the stuff, yeah, that's great.
It's easy to connect, but they're the assholes saying, no, it costs money to redo.
Yeah, and it's ridiculous. Well, have a good one, I'll get my strawberries.
Wait, your strawberry's down there, right?
Yeah. Towards the PD. I'll carry it, here. Okay, and if I don't find one, I'll give it to Bike Guy.
Oh yeah, or Bike Guy, he'll love it.
He'll love it, that's what I'm saying, I'll go and buy, give him mine too. I know, I sound like. Yeah, I like that too, if we see her, we'll give it to her, I'll, I'll give her mine too. Like, I'm not probably gonna eat it. I'm just gonna have strawberries for dinner, um. Yeah, that's true, that's a good idea, yeah, 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 I know, me too. That's why I'm not gonna come back to the meeting, I'm just gonna go to the police station, see what we need to do. Then I'm gonna go home and I'm gonna file more things, yeah. We'll find out if this is, and if not, if we need to go do the other one.
Are you guys gonna try to go back in the building, you say?
No, we're gonna go to the police, we are trying to file some complaints.
There you go.
And so, yeah, I'm gonna go home after that, I think. I'm very sleep deprived, I've only had like seven hours sleep in 48 hours, so. Nice to meet you. Yeah, it's really good. Yeah. Yeah, and I love her vibe or look, yeah. Yes, thank you for. She's a musician too, yeah, she's. Sounds good, yeah, bye. Yeah, yeah, it's down here. Bye Herman. Hey guys, I want my strawberries, so, can you guys hear, let me go out and in again, okay. Excuse me. Oh man, don't tell me they don't have strawberries. So they've, oh, scared. I don't know. What are these days? I might. I know. Because I'm allergic to, I took one time, it was like a sea moss, and I got a bad allergic reaction. Yeah, oh, you got the, is that the Goyotas? Oh, can I get the really good red, red ones, like the three pack? Yeah, like the really red, yeah, red juicy ones. Huh? How much for two packs? 20? But I wonder how many days that would go good for. Is that one redder? No, the, or that one in the back, or, okay. Um. Yeah, give me the two, I guess. Yeah, are they really sweet now? Okay. Yes, please, yeah. How long do they last, like, like in the fridge? In the fridge, cuánto días in the refrigerator? Okay. Glad to, I've eaten a lot of strawberries. But I don't get these often, like. Huh, uh, yeah, yep. Hey guys.
Thank you.
Thank you. I got, thank you, oh, sorry, I'm sorry. You don't have bag with handles? No, oh, it's okay, we'll work it out. Won't be too long. I know, I was like, thank you. Huh, cuánto? Yeah, I have anxiety, because I had like a really bad allergic reaction, so I don't know. Uh, I know, it probably will, I mean, I might, I'm not gonna do it today, because I got two of these, but. I'm scared though, because of the reaction I had. Like, do you have a sample and see if I get allergic reaction to it?
Yes, here.
Okay, that's a fair start, that's, I'm just like nervous, because like.
No, this is, this kills the allergy. It's natural, my spirina, it's the food that.
But I'm like very allergic to mold and.
This is what the astronaut eats.
Okay, I'll see if I have a reaction to that.
I'm sure you don't.
Okay, if I don't, then, how much is it?
For one week is $2 a day, $15 for one week. To eat a teaspoon a day, that's it. Don't cook it, because it's fresh.
Okay, and how mu, how much is it total?
15.
Oh, 15? All right, that's it, thank you for letting me try, I'll see if I, if I don't have an allergic reaction.
I see you every week and I'm thinking, she should have it. But I only need to convince you.
Yeah, is this because of that allergic reaction with the?
You don't have, I am sure 100%. This is the most pure, natural concentrate soup.
Okay, but we'll see how I, how I do, thank you, whoops, sorry. Where are my frien, where'd they go, man? Did Laura go back up there? I know, and these are like the good little wild strawberries. Where's she go? The algae stuff is a little weird, I mean, it doesn't taste bad, if it was. If I don't have allergic reaction, I'd probably try it, oh, information, oh, wait a minute, these guys are. Where's she go? Where's she go? Oh, hey Lionel, how you doing? How you doing?
I'm fantastic.
Good, thank you. Hey man, yeah, gotta, gotta get rid, that cult from abusing people. You weren't, you weren't at Bonk yesterday, I was like, you weren't at Bonk yesterday? Ari? We're finding a lot of connections, um, before, for, um, from, like Glenn Schaefer gets really weird when we bring up Scientology. But he was a DA and he, I guess, was in a case against them, and I think, I don't know, we're finding all this weird connections, so now he gets really weird, but like, he's. Violating people's freedom of speech. Yeah, like cutting them off topic when or not, this weird stuff. But you're doing good?
Yeah.
Awesome.
I don't know, I'm not receiving a vacation, I, I would feel bad if, I don't know, as a budget advocate, I'm a budget advocate.
Right.
We're supposed to have a meeting with the mayor, Karen Bass, I think Kate Hartman, sorry. He said the 13th, which is next Thursday, but I have never received anything, communication. I hope I get invited, because I should be invited.
Oh man.
I wanna ask Mayor Bass about budget issues, because we don't wanna no further cuts to the departments, especially.
Right. I know, they're just getting more money today. Oh, hey, how you doing? I know, how about you, how you doing? Right. Like, hey, I'm trying.
Haven't heard anything yet, so.
All right, well, keep me, like, hopefully get in, cause we need that. I just don't know where my friends are. Guys, I'm gonna have to call, huh? Who?
Eleven delivery robot.
Oh, my gosh, they're so funny. I love them. Okay, guys, I'm gonna have to call. Hold on, I'll be right back. I gotta call Laura. Okay, guys, we're back. That is, that, that thing tasted weird, and it's like, ugh. Huh? Oh, I know, we, oh, man. That'd be good just for lunch. I am too, I love it, too. Me, too. Next time, we'll do that. We'll do that one next. Don't wanna get eggs today, no. I like the, the fresh eggs. I know, I think. The eggs are good. We're gonna go to the police. Awesome, let's go for it, if you want. I can't, and I'm like nervous right now, like, oh, like a. Aw, yeah, Tex, I was like, yeah, I love strawberries. Aw, man, I, I didn't have it for like two days. I was like, oh. So I got two packs. Have a good one.
Thank you, too.
Thanks. Hi, I guess you saw that? I know, me too, man, but the other stuff was so good. Really are good mama jama, jammer, jams. So good. I don't know how you, I'm amazed at all your craftiness, how you do all that stuff, you and your craft circle. All the talent, like, I, I. I, like, and people that do, and the jarring, and the preserving, like, that's so, like. Oh, here she is, just getting eggs. The, the eggs are good, like, it's like the brown and, the real chicken chickens. Right from the, straight from the chicken. No middleman. Oh, yeah, it's horrible. Tell them they can't. Strawberries working, oh, that's so funny. That's hilarious. Yeah, so we're trying to get the street opened up. Okay, that, that spirulina thing is freaking me out. I'm like, having. Like, the taste isn't going away. She gave me a sample of the spirulina, and the taste is not going away. Like, you taste it, it seems, there's no taste to it, and then, but then that taste that there is, it's like, it won't go away. It's still. You do spirulina, does it help you, Antix? See, I had a really bad reaction to some kind of sea moss thing, or and it was such a bad reaction. I'm like freaking out, but she says it's not from the sea. Awesome. Oh, yeah, I got my berries. Oh, you got, they, oh, yeah. Yeah, they, he's really good with the strawberries. Okay. Okay, that's good. I'll see how I do. Does that help? Oh, so it's a lot of, okay, yeah. What are the little orange things?
They're called, uh, what are they called?
Look how delicious all the fruit looks. Are they sour?
No, they taste like, um.
But what are they? Are, are they? Gooseberries? Are they sweet? Can I try one? Yeah, yeah, yeah. Here, thank you. Okay, gooseberry. We're gonna, I'm gonna try a gooseberry. Huh? You know what? That might get, that get rid of the, that tastes. Yeah, that's weird. It kinda tastes like a tomato, mixed with. A fr- like a, yeah, with that orange. Like a tomato-orange. Or lemon tomato. Yeah, yeah. It's a little weird. Yeah, I wouldn't buy them.
Thank you. All finished?
Yep, yep. Nope, I'm getting too fast. Well, look, these carrots. Is that carrots? Or is that something else? Is that, that's not carrots, right? What's that?
Yeah, that's a big fatty daddy baby.
Is it? That is a carrot? It looked like it'd be something else. Wow, it's not like a turnip? See, that's what happens when you get real dirt in a farm. Yeah. It is. I know, that's why I love farmer, Mark, I like, straight from the farm, and I need to get some of them. Oh, I love strawberry. No, I'm going with you because we're doing this. No, 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 I'm gonna, I'm. I, well, it's, I, I mean, I have a chair to, like, I'd be okay. Is this the lugging? Yeah, no, I, I don't wanna go to the two o'clock. Even though it's getting close, I could come, I mean, oh, I kinda want his eggplant. What happened? What happened? I just always. What did he steal? Excuse me, I'm sorry, I'm trying to film it for him. Casey, sure.
Yeah, he dropped.
Wow.
Oh, my gosh.
That's crazy. He took all of, that's. Yeah, I think so. He took a jar of money or something. Of course, the cops are never there when you need them sometimes. Hi, hi, oh, I don't know if I wanna. The Ratatouille, I'm gonna have to come back next week. I love the Ratatouille. Sorry you went through that. That's crazy, man. Idiots, huh? Do I wanna get my Ratatouille quiche? Are you serious? But where's the con- like, wait, you know, why don't they, they should have security, huh? Yeah.
Security guards that we saw earlier, they should be down here.
Exactly. We, we, we put the Scientology security guards there, give them something useful to do. Well, you know what, um, he should, I guess, every time he. No, he would've been scared. I know, it's true. Like, yo, man, like, poonies, poonies. Yeah, interfering with the cult.
No, they only have muscle over people that are afraid of them.
Yeah, that makes sense. Like, that guy wasn't afraid, but.
Scientologists are afraid of security guards.
Really?
They know they're part of the ethics department.
Oh, are they? Is that how it works?
They're told to do something, you have to do it.
Oh, that's.
Ethics, legal.
Wow. Oh, I'm gonna cross.
A long time ago, there was a security, somebody came in, celebrity, an ex-member, something came in a celebrity center with samurais, and was like having mental issues, and the security guard shot him.
Wow, I heard about that. And they got away with that, right? Good.
Secured Scientology.
Wait.
Legal.
Oh, okay, but I don't want them having guns if they're gonna be shooting at us. They need to not have guns. But now they ha- they hire these looney terrans, and I won't, you know, and, whoa. And, yeah, that dude was cra- you know, that, that one guard is so unhinged. What bigger bag? Cause I don't mind carrying it. I'm just so used to it.
Look at this, look.
What bag?
Remember this one, so it's strong AF.
Oh, okay, yeah, we could do that. Even just this.
Do I have permission?
Yes, ma'am, of course. Okay. Yeah, loves you. You think so, too?
How, is it really heavy?
No, wait, I just can't lift it, cause my arm kinda pinched the nerve. Thanks, I've been having numbness issues. Yes, yeah. Yeah, and I just had to remind myself not to squish my strawberries. I did that last time. You said you're not gonna, you said you're not gonna squish them, and then I squished them. Is Iris in here? Hey, oh. Where's Iris? Hey, Iris. All right, we're gonna, we keep on, we keep on paddling to get this cult under control.
Now, we're going to, okay, I'm putting it on both of your coats.
Okay, thank you, thank you. It's beautiful today.
Perfect. It's a little bit further in the back, but you're good.
Awesome.
It's really behind you, so.
Oh, thank you. I just had to remember not to squish it.
This is a beautiful building.
It is, yeah, it's really cool. And we got to see it from the top. We got to see the heliport, the helipad. We're dissing dirt on Iris. What's the dirt on Iris?
So I think they're saying, I think what they're gonna tell, we're gonna go here and find out. I think what they're gonna tell us is that we have to go to Fifth and something.
If we do, we will.
Okay.
But they were.
Did you hear from your car yet? No, let them, let us to go.
Iris is not innocent? I don't know about that. I think I'm gonna, I, I think, I think she's very innocent. I think she's innocent. Iris just has that, like, although there's always the, those Iris, the Iris, they always have that look of shenanigans and mischief in their eyes. But I think she's innocent.
What's happening?
Oh, no, it's like, they're saying that, um, Iris is not innocent, but I think she's innocent. She just, they, I said, the Iris just have that mischievous look of shenanigans, but.
Irish?
Uh, you know, Irish.
Who's not innocent?
Iris. We, all right, we'll behave, we're gonna behave. She's a delicate flower. No, the, no, that's Hagis. Wait, hold on. Iris Mart. Thought she's Irish. Uh, no, Hagis is in Canada, I think Iris, she's in Iris, right? In Irishland, Ira- Ireland. I'm Irish, part of Irish.
Okay, so, Otis, can you find out?
Yeah. Yes, officer, um, we were told, um, she wants to file a complaint against a retired officer that was working on a film, um, LA permit, but because, so Film LA said that we need to go to the LAPD that, that, all the, if it's an officer, retired or current, or overtime, that they had to go through the film, um, permit unit here. Yeah. Perfect, thank you, sir. Okay, we'll wait over here. Yes, for LAPD film, the LAPD film unit, the one who gave us the permits, what guy?
The supervisor that showed up, Laura, he's his last name.
Oh, no, 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 this is, no, it's named, I forget his name, I think, but no, it's the film unit. I don't think it would be that one. I mean, who knows, but they probably have several.
And they'll do the same thing in taking the report, right? They'll give me the incident number, and then I'll load up the evidence?
I would think so, probably. That's why I've never done this. This is new to me, because I always, so, cause when it's retired, so we're gonna find out together. Here's Iris Mart. Oh, I wanna, I do wanna, I love eggplant. She wants his eggplant, okay, maybe she's not so innocent, Iris, she naughty, naughty girl.
I think Iris is pretty cool.
Oh, I love her. I love these, I love all the, the different accents I wear, you know, I can't even fake the accent, but I love these guys, gals, guys, everyone.
My accent are very sloppy.
See, I'm from Jersey, we always call everyone guys. Hi, Happy Gilmore. He's almost in through Zane.
Um, who's this again?
Oh, Kay Hartman, she's the president of, um, the Neighborhood Council Las Palmas.
There.
She's cool, she's cool. I like, I like her.
No, no, Palms.
Palms, yeah, Palms. Palms, yeah, Neighborhood Council. Yeah. There are vegetables and meat. I love eggplant parmesan. It's good stuff, it's so good stuff. I love eggplant. Oh, cause I was saying, yeah, I wanted his eggplant, his, his Ratatouille, um, quiche is so good, but I haven't quiche in the first. It seems like overkill on quiche, but his little Ratatouille, you know, like the eggplant quiche, that front, the one next to the coffee, man, his stuff's good.
Oh, they were saying eggplant.
Yeah, cause it's the Ratatouille, yeah, it's like, when is eggplant? Yeah, that's why she's making a, yeah, a reference, I mean, he's eggplant, yeah. Well, he has a.
The eggplant emoji.
Yeah, 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 I think I seen that bounced around dirty, dirty. So Iris is not so innocent after all. Oh, that's cool. That's cool. I know. There you go. Yeah, that, that's perfect. I know, I lost my, uh. Yeah, Hagis, what kind of walks do you go on? I was just like, hi, Iris, any vibrating chairs on your evening walk? Iris is like, Jesus, Hagis, that's where what kind of walks you go on? Oh, you, they are characters.
Just a nice morning walk.
That's a nice morning walk. I know, I wasn't, had like a massager, like the massager fingers. I was innocent before I met Muriel. You know what? I believe that. I believe that. But I bet she's gonna say it's the other way around. Scallywags. Hi, Happy Gilmore. Good, how you doing? That's his name. Can I, I'm gonna tell him the story. Yeah, he's, he's Happy Gilmore, because I used to, like, he, he was always like, so like, let's just say. Yeah, he's, he's Happy Gilmore, because I used to, like, he, he was always like, so like, let's just say, very, um, straight, like, 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 didn't smile much. But then, and I was, I used to get like, like a little intimidated by it, like, and then, but the, the shoeshine guy said, he's the funniest guy, like, and everyone said, he's so funny, I'm like, but he's always so serious. They're like, no, that's just his game face, he's working as a cop, it's game face. And then, then he smiled at me once, and I, I gave him a commendation just for smiling, right? Did you get it? Did they give it to you? Your commendation for smiling? I hope they didn't give it to the wrong cop. Did they give it to the wrong? That was like months ago, though. Dang, if they didn't, I'll tell, yeah, again, and all I play is like, he smiled at me, and I'm, like, and it's like, let's, I make him sometimes goofy, you know? But I call him Happy Gilmore, cause he is really, like, he's a nice smiling guy, but he's just, yeah, you just never know, right? Don't judge a book by its cover, right? Yeah, he's gotta be, he's on business, he's gotta deal with all of our shenanigans, all the public's shenanigans, right? So he's gotta be. So that's her nickname, Happy Gilmore. I give him all, I give all you guys nicknames, so don't take it as anything, it's actually out of respect. Cause I don't wanna have to remember names, like, I don't remember their names, I remember the names I give. Oh, here. We need to get, we need to get like, uh, like all kinds of, um, like bags, it feels weird being here and there's no, like, meeting. There's hustle and bustle. The public, yeah, the, um, police commission meetings, we did that yesterday. Tuesday mornings in your. And shirt guy got in trouble with Streets. He deserved it, naughty, naughty, yeah. Well, cause it's like, it's true, I mean, I, you know, like, it's, how do you come after these people, and then you get called first, I like. Random, it may not be that he's doing anything, but maybe the girl who calls the names are sweet, is sweet on him or something, I don't know, somebody thinks he's cute and charming.
No, he put a random name.
No, he always puts a random name.
Yeah, I know.
But he turned it in after everyone else.
Oh, I also thought that.
No, you turn it into the cop.
Somebody else, oh, okay, okay.
Yeah, no, and so, like, but how did, somewhere along the line, he got up front first, I'm like, so like, every, cause you know, it's legit to be upset, because not everybody gets to speak, it'd be different if you knew everyone was gonna speak, who cares, he goes first. But by him going first, and if somebody who was here before him doesn't get to speak because of it.
Which is what happened.
Well, no, he, he was there before all the people that got cut off, everyone that was there before him got to speak. Yeah, cause he came in before, he came in before me, and so, like, right in before me, um, but, yeah, no, so he did, but, but still, but Streets should have been first. Yeah, yeah, and all of us, so, yeah, so I can't fault Streets for.
Because they called me, and that's just, you know, how do they call you, me, Streets?
Well, cause we don't put the names in, yeah, cause we were all first.
Then why did he come up then?
Right.
That's what I'm saying, there's something.
Yeah, he put in first. No, I think it's the, I think it might be the lady who does the cards, that, maybe she's like giving him special. Maybe, yeah, so I gotta ask him. Cause even he was surprised, but he was surprised. Even he was surprised about it. Oh, thank you. Thank you, sir. Okay, just wait here?
Yeah, just right here.
Thank you, thank you. Oh, that's good, so we're in the right. Ooh, Ikea, I love Ikea, do you ever go to Ikea?
Uh, I do, I do like it for literally twenty minutes. Which is impossible. I can't stand the life.
Do you like the little Irish meeples in the cafeteria? With the little lichen berries, yeah, I know, that, that's. So any reason, right, there is no other reason to go. Getting those lichen berry with the, the meeples with lichen berry, yeah, with lichen berry sauce, jelly. And then that one dollar coffee, if you sign up for their thing. Oh, that's right, but they have decaf.
I don't drink.
Oh, okay, yeah, so I get my dollar, and it's like really good coffee, and it's like a dollar, and I get all the.
Yeah, I know, I do like, and I like going there to grab like that band with the perfect frickin' little thing.
Yeah, yeah.
I literally start to get, um, anxiety, I don't know what it's from, probably my childhood. With the lighting and.
I like the film in there, though. It is, but it's fun to go in and like take crazy pictures, or like make little film skits and stuff. Because it's all set up like a stage, so you can just make, like, I go, yeah, I go in and film. Yes, and Ikea. Yeah, cause you, it's like already set up as a living room, an office, whatever you need, a kitchen, so you could do like a little, yeah, that's what I used to do. Yeah, that's what I do, yeah. Let's go do it, we have, like, have dander. Yeah. Yeah, and that's what I wanna do, cause I like to do that, I used to do that. And I'd go make a, yeah. Yeah, make, yeah. Your own kids, and they have bedrooms, it has everything. Yeah, it's a perfect film set, I'm telling you, cause it's got all the lighting, I know the lighting, but it is, it's a perfect film set, yeah, I used to do that, cause it's like a free film set. Oh, yeah, yeah, and they let you film. And they let you, they always let us film, we always, I used to do that, cause I used to like make skits. Yeah, the lights bother, Antix has the lights bother her, I know, it's, it's true, the lights are, but it's a perfect for filming.
Yeah, but what, the antics thing, I have that same thing, I have sensitivity.
Yeah, the photo synesthesia. No, I know. Yeah.
With migraines and seizures, you have to like do anything to not get.
Trust me, I had a head injury as a kid, and I had seizures, I had several ma- major seizures, yeah. But the lights don't bother me there, it don't, you know what bothers me, like, when it's flickering, like here on the tenth floor, they have this one light that's flickering, I can't handle it. Yeah, same. Me too, and I had to report, they, thankfully, they, cause I said, look, that can trigger, I mean, thank God, I haven't had one in, since I was a kid. But, it, yeah, but it gives that panic of like, oh, yeah. Me too. Maybe if you wore sunglasses. And then just take them off to film, when you're filming. Well, just say, um, yeah, speaking of names. There you go, yeah, Blondie, that's true. I do get temporarily lost in Ikea, and always a relief when I see the exit, that's so true. Yeah, you get lost in there, like, it's kinda, that's the, that's anxiety, yeah, that you, like, I don't know how to get out, yeah, 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 yeah. No, that's legit, that's a legit anxiety right there. It does. No, it's true, I can't get out, and I don't know how to get out. It happens to me on the tenth floor here, I don't know how to get out.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, cause that tenth floor, like, the, yeah, I was like, yes, I was like, how do I get out of here? It's true. I know, Walmart's just weird for different reasons, like Walmart has its own scary, but I probably watch too many, like, you know, I don't know, where they're always like, all these like, scary stuff about Walmart and stuff, so I'm like, I don't know, it just seems like creepy, you know, like, you know, like, they're like, be careful, like, don't park next to that white man. I do delivery. I know. I know, they're always like. Yeah, I hear you. Yeah, they're always like.
Yeah, there's certain lights.
Yeah.
Like lights that do that, classroom, like, schools, hospitals, hospitals for sure.
Yeah. Yeah, no, I get it.
When I was taking care of Bob, and he would ever be in the hospitals and stuff, I was always like, okay, I'm like, oh, can I turn down the lights?
It's this kinda lighting and set, yeah. Fluorescent and whatever. Yeah, I think that's right, yeah, get, like, uh, like sunglasses, I know my new, I can't wait to get my glasses, it's gonna be like transitions, like to dark. Yeah, so.
I just have this weird belief, and it may be correct, that if you don't use your eyes, like, your eyes are a muscle, so if you get glasses, your eyes will get worse.
It can technically, but it's so bad that I have to. Hello, hi, are you with the film permit?
Yeah.
Yes.
Hi, so I need to file a report on, I guess this happened.
A complaint about a month ago? When did that happen, guys, the, the, the walk the statues?
It was like 5:00 AM, um, it was a Scientology, like, film shoot that they had permanent, it was an officer, Alex.
Did you try to contact them LA?
Yes, and they, uh, yes, and I had the email from them, because it's a retired officer, they do not have to, um, they don't register with them, they register with you, so they told us. They said that there's a, um, a film for any retired cops, or any off-duty cops that they're. Or how to file a complaint against them, it has nothing to do with Film LA. Yeah, okay.
They're retired, they don't have police powers.
Right.
So they're not.
Although they were using them, but okay.
Well, hold on, let me explain first. So who's the one making complaint here?
Me. She's my advocate, so she will stay with me.
So, they're not just.
Why are you angry? You seem angry, like you're like frustrated.
No, I just got down here.
Okay.
It seems like you're upset.
But she's a victim. Let's do a reset, let's just explain, let's get, let's just reset, let's just reset. Okay, thank you, sir. Okay.
So go through all this first, and then that way, we clear up, request information, this information now. They're not department employees, right? I can take a complaint against the officer if you have information. It's gonna be adjudicated and not department employee, I'm just letting you know that.
Okay.
Film LA contacted me yesterday about someone, they just said somebody had called trying to get information from a permit. That, that's on that, whatever Film LA does or does not do, it has nothing to do with us, right?
Are you saying they called?
If you want, like, a copy of specific things, you would have to, uh, request CEPR.
Oh, well, we have, that must not be us, cause I have the permit, like, I, they answered my CEPR.
Yeah, we've got.
Film LA guys?
Yes.
I have it.
So that must be a separate one, because.
Can I talk to who, Tim?
Yes.
Yeah, so this is the same, we're talking about the same thing.
Oh, okay, yeah, he gave me the info, but he said we had to come here.
So, I can read the email that Tim sent me?
Okay.
They did not, did they give you the information about going to CEPR?
Yes.
Okay, that's the information that came from me?
And I, and I did, yeah.
Okay, that's information, this is totally separate. What specifically do you, uh, in terms of?
Yeah, explain the story.
He used his body and his arms and kept slamming his arm, and after I kept on stop touching, he stopped touching me. Let me see your bag, who are, it's a whole, it's all, it's, it went on for thirty-four hours. Got the supervisor all of his. I called the supervisor, he was already on their side, that's why I was like, oh, so you're mad at me as well, too, for calling you?
Do you have the supervisor's information?
Yes, he, I, he came in hard and rude, and was defending already the cop that I was already having issues with, so I refused to speak to him. I gave, I said, you are not the supervisor, I need to, I would like to make an assault report against him badly. And, uh, and he gave me a card and said, wouldn't, yeah, I have it.
Here, that's all, okay, that's, hold on. It was the fifth of October, by the way.
And so, uh, he refused to listen to me, and so then I said, give me, just give me your bag, I'm gonna make my own report.
Was that a supervisor from the division, or? How do you know this is a movie incident?
This is the guy.
I have a copy of the permit too, if you don't have the full, you have the permit, yeah.
So, just like, you know, I'm not being argumentative with you, I'm asking questions, so, I'm just asking, how do you know the film permit, I have to say this is the film permit, so that's why I'm trying to, trying to, like, solid, because.
You also don't know what I've been through, and you don't know who hasn't helped you, including supervisors.
She's a trauma victim.
I understand, and I'm telling you, the way you're helping me is true, I'm not yelling, I'm using emotional upset to show you that I'm triggered. So you feeling offended that I'm triggered is useless.
I'm trying to help you.
I get it, so I don't need you to be like questioning like how I am.
I'm not questioning you.
Good, I'm making a report, don't make a fucking issue.
Okay, ma'am, also, there's people here, we're in public space.
This is the public space, I have the First Amendment voice, of my emotions, I can speak and feel, this isn't, this is what is not okay. This. Okay, good, so stop interrupting my feelings when I'm telling you and answering things as well. Be aware of what I'm like going through.
Okay. So, you know it's a film permit, cause you have a copy of the film?
Here's the supervisor, that's the first question was asked, do you have the card of the supervisor?
So is this, is this him?
That's the supervisor who came, and this is the person who assaulted me.
Okay. So, on that, one thing at a time, okay. What specifically? So here's, as you refuse to give further information.
No, I'm allowed to say that.
Okay, it's just.
I'm just asking questions, one piece at a time.
I'm allowed to answer how I answer. You don't have to be stressed out about my answer.
I'm doing my best.
What's your question? Literally, what's your question?
Do you want me to help you, or do you want me to get somebody else, or how do you wanna, how do you wanna handle this, because?
I want you to answer me, where I file a report on this.
I, I know, but that's why I'm asking you questions, okay, so, for Tim, alright, this guy right here. He came out, supervisor came out to you, to the scene. October fifth, what time, where?
Five AM. Six and flower.
You said something about Scientology earlier, where does it have to do with six, six hours, or something there?
They are shooting, Scientology is shooting the whole film permit there.
Okay, so it's a film permit.
We were protesting with the Scientologists that uses this protocol.
You could go, it's like, yeah, just documenting for. You okay? You're okay, it's okay. It's okay. Breathe, it's okay. We're gonna get it done.
So, how do you know he's retired?
I'm only, or maybe off-duty, I don't know, because of his.
I think it was the film permit people, I think it was Tim that said so, or something. Oh, yeah, no, it's in, yeah, I know.
Maybe we'll make a podcast first, and then I'll come back out.
Thank you. It's okay. What we're finding, this is good though. We're seeing. To, I get, well. No, he's, cause I've been back and forth with Tim, and he's probably trying to get some bottom-line information too. But yeah, but he's, he's, he doesn't know. No, they have to, that's, he, we're here, he's taking, he's, no, but he's got it, Laura, Laura, this is, that's not my complaint with him, they're, it's good to ask, I'd rather them ask these questions. Cause it means he's probing, it means he's taking it serious, so I'm actually happy he's asking questions. What I'm not happy with is that he doesn't seem to understand how to switch his tones when he say, he's saying he's dealing with somebody who's triggered. He doesn't have that, that's his only issue. His asking questions is good. He should be asking more, like, all these questions, that's good, he's doing his job investigatory, that's actually to your benefit. It's how he's not, he's, but see, this. I know, but this is what. He is, but he is. He didn't know how to transition, but I noticed towards the end, he did, he is trying to transition, and you did too. So let's just take a deeper, let him transition, and then we go, and we tell, like, whoever, saying, you know what, we need, we need to come up with, like, training for officers who are dealing with someone who's been in a high-control group, and how to deal with, when they're dealing with emotions of that person's, you know, cause we're, cause you guys are never allowed to go to the police. Now that you are, it's new, it's scary, it's whatever, overwhelming, they need training, so we need to be able to get in and train these officers. He just doesn't know what he's dealing with, so, we're gonna, we're documenting it, so we know, we're starting to learn what the problem is, and what the solution, we're gonna come up with a solution.
I think letting them know, though, that I'm triggered, and that it's PTSD.
Yes, that's good.
And that I'm even working with it, they should learn that, okay.
But we need, we need to train the whole department, we need to get into training. No, that's what we, I wanna do films like, that's the stuff I've always wanted to do, is training. Okay, how to deal with the people. I can be too. Right, so, but. Right, but see, but he is doing it, so everyone just needs to take a deep breath, and like, reset. He was, at the beginning, I, for sure, that's what I'm saying, he wasn't handling it right. No, I don't think it was that, I think it was like, he, yeah, I think he felt, like, I don't know, like, I don't, I don't wanna say what he felt. But, yeah, he didn't, his, it was more his, not what he was saying, but his tone, and it was very off-putting. Like, I would have been off-put by that too, and triggered by, because it's not like, we've been saying, you need officers who are sensitive, he was lacking sensitivity. And triggered by it because it's not like, we've been saying you need officers who are sensitive. He was lacking sensitivity.
He needs to check himself.
Right.
I'm not doing his job. If I was, I would be a lot nicer to the person who's having PTSD.
But that's, but see, that's what I'm saying. They come in with this like, you know, stern face. That's where we need to, I really want to do training. Like I want to come up with some training, films or something.
Handle things much easier. We could have been out here.
I know. But let's just let him do his job. Let him ask the questions because it's good. That's what he's supposed to do. But he wants to make sure it goes, yeah, let's see, but he wants to make sure it goes to the right place. We want to make sure it goes to the right place. We want, because maybe this has never come up before. I know, but we're doing. But that's what, but we're pushing through.
All the way up, all the way to this point.
Yeah. But that's why we're pushing through, yes. But that's what we're demolishing, right? One brick at a time. Okay, well, he can be annoyed. But let him, let him be annoyed. Who cares? As long as he, we, as long as we leave with what we need, let him be annoyed. Who cares? You know? That's his problem to deal with. But it's okay. You can always do a complaint. You know, it's, it's okay. Take a deep breath. This is your moment. You, you, I am so proud of you, aren't you? Like, I'm so proud of you. That regardless of whatever roadblocks, whatever emotional barriers, you're overcoming them all and you're doing it. You're not getting off track. You're not letting anyone or anything, even his attitude. And you stood up to him, which was great. But now let's just take, that's, that's hope that he's readjusted himself and see how he comes and that's come in with, you know what I mean? I would say, take a deep breath and let's see how, and let's try to get a solu-, because we want a solution, right? We want to work together as far as getting what we need from this. Rather than have to have him call somebody else or whatever. Hopefully he can get himself together and do it. I think we're getting that. Yeah. No, no, that he may be able to do it. Don't we have to, but he has to ask. He's got to know, but yeah, that's where he, I mean, in all fairness, he's got to ask questions to get to, so he knows where it needs to go. Because this is very strange.
But at the beginning, he wasn't even learning.
Right, I know.
No, you guys are on the wrong path.
I know, I agree. That's why we persisted, right? That's why we stayed with it. And I said, I did all that. Yeah. Yeah, okay. It's okay. Let him, you know, it's like, it doesn't matter. As long as we get out of here today. Yeah, I agree. They need to have, see, the thing is, like I always say with him, help dig. Okay.
And now they-
Alright, so I have all this information. So I call my lieutenant just to see, verify how she wants to handle this.
Okay.
Who is your lieutenant?
Lieutenant Self. Uh, so, I want you to walk me through exactly what happened when it comes to, I know you guys were protesting, like, more specifically, if you know, like, I was on the northeast corner, I was doing whatever, whatever you were doing. And then just run it through the whole gamut of what exactly happened. I'll take notes and then I'll kind of like clarify again.
Okay, so I, just the very beginning, me and my friend were noticing that a Scientology van, like a bus, was pulling up to this location, which was unusual for them to be. And it was between, it was on Flower, between six and seven. And so I parked my car and we walked down on the street and we saw everybody filming. A bunch of people like holding still pictures for all of me, like a few hours they had already been serving. And so then we started just saying, this is a Scientology protest, just as we do. We're kind of, obviously, I'm a loud rock star singer anyway, so I'm sure people don't like that, especially when you're protesting now. Um, and so, uh, I walk up the sidewalk, then I go on to the main walkway. Where the road, it was the road, but there's a walkway in the road, um, on Flower. And so, and then at that point is when this officer started coming up to me, get off the street. And then I said, I'm pro, I'm protesting, I'm allowed to protest. Um, this is public area, this is sidewalk. And he said, there's a permit, get off the street, get off the street. And I said, show me the permit, show me the permit. Said this road is closed. We kind of went back and forth on that for a little bit as I'm kind of walking. And then, and then as he sees me moving, because I started to move toward the sidewalk, but also to get around him.
But now you're on the sidewalk?
Well, I was walking, after he's, no, 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 I haven't gone on the sidewalk yet. I turned, like, I was turning. I'm, I'm live streaming everything, so I'm also documenting like what he's doing and saying. And then I'm moving, I'm going to sidewalk. And I started telling one of the people that the actors or something like, hey, you're a part of Cult. You know, all these members around here are only getting paid forty-seven dollars a week while you guys are being paid to stand, whatever. And as I was in the middle of that, um, he, he then, his, I partner, I didn't get his partner's name, but I do have it all on the camera. Came over and started repeating what he was saying, um, officer, please, or I don't know. And so then he starts, uh, as his partner's coming toward me, he starts reading up more, like, get on, I, like, listen to me, get on this sidewalk. And, and doing this really aggressive smile where he's like, I can't, like, he was like being like, because I'm telling you what to do. And I was like, what is this? Like, why are you? And so as I'm doing that, he starts shoving me with his body. He said, I said, go. And, and between that, I don't want to get loud, but, I started calling, asking for a supervisor. I said, get your supervisor. And then his partner, I said, who are you? And his partner had some like, um, like a casual police sweater or something, so it wasn't obvious that he was an actual officer. I didn't know if he was a security guard or whatever. And he was like, no, I'm the police, I, and I said, go get your supervisor. I don't trust any of you, because he had already been shoving me. Then his partner proceeds to pull out his taser. Um, as I'm being, as he's shoving me, the guy, this guy, is shoving me onto the sidewalk. So then I'm finally like, stop touching me, like I'm, like, whatever. And I'm on the sidewalk at that point. So I say, I'm on the sidewalk, stop pushing me, stop touching me, you know? And so then I turned to go up and down the sidewalk and as I get onto the sidewalk, um, his partner pulls out, uh, the taser and triggers it. To like scare me. And I did get scared. I freaked the fuck out. And I was like, you guys are psychotic. And I, uh, so I started just walking up, down and up the sidewalk away from them. And I was filming them as they were just following me the whole time. Everywhere I would go, they were just following me, following me, following me. And then, uh, supervisor came finally.
Laura.
Yeah, Laura, which was, I thought would be a good, I was like, oh, good, Officer Laura, I'm Laura. And right there, he was like, stand back, like, and very defensive. And I was like, whoa, man. I said, uh, he was like, he was like, uh, you, you could be a possible threat or something like this. And so then right away, I was just like, I'm not talking to you, man, like. I was already having PTSD and all that, so.
So you said you have the live stream. Do you have copies of the video?
Yeah, yeah. I have it all on my, uh, I didn't know if you were gonna give me like a link that I was able to upload the evidence.
I'll tell you how we're gonna handle this.
Yeah, I do have everything on, most of it. Yeah, with, I mean, the whole live stream. I started live streaming right when I got there.
And are you willing to share it with investigators?
Yeah, absolutely.
So you're saying he's shoving you with his body. What specifically? I know you're saying it, but tell me, like, how was it?
Okay, his arm and then his stomach part and then his shoulders. So he goes arm and he shoves his body and then he goes his shoulders.
And where are, are they contacting you?
Right here, on my chest, yeah, and my arms. And then my camera, my arm that I was holding the camera.
With your left hand?
Yeah, and then he actually grabbed my arm at one point and shoved me onto the sidewalk.
So this person is using, I don't know if you remember, but as I'm facing you, right? Are you using the right hand or left hand?
Left hand, actually. His left hand and, well, and the right of his body, but he was, he kept giving me the fist, like he was gonna punch me when he was doing that smile. He was like, what are you doing? Like you're a maniac.
And you have that on camera?
Yeah, yeah. And I was like, stop smiling like that. Like he's losing me.
Continuing with his left arm, stomach area and-
Shoulder and threatens with his fist in his face like he's gonna hit me.
Do you remember right or left?
Uh, well, it's kind of a mix, like permissioned and, and then I was probably trying to hold my, stop touching me. I was, I just wanted to be clear, I was being pretty strong.
Right.
Loud, do not touch me, you keep touching me.
So left arm, stomach area, they're both stronger.
My arm. Yeah, my arm. So my hand, I was like stop touching me, so probably, I might have moved the camera to my right arm or something. And yeah, like trying to move my body.
And then threatening to punch you?
Yes. Not with the words, but with his fist and his look. Like he was-
And then what happens at the end? Like, how does this all end?
Um, I tell him, like, you, I don't care if you're a cop, you're getting arrested, you keep assaulting me, like, like you should know better, da, da, da. Then, um, then the supervisor came and told you that incident happened. And I was like, I was just like, I, I think it had already been an hour and I've been waiting and it was just constant harassment from the two officers. And, uh, at that point, I was, I wanted to do this, like meet somebody in person and just say that's it. Get the guy, George Lara's info as being a supervisor who was there. Um, who basically only saw the end result of what was happening.
And then?
And I was like in my mix of like being upset.
Did you end up leaving or like?
Uh, no, I stayed there. Um, they were told basically, yeah, that don't bother them when they're on the sidewalk and all of that. And, uh, the supervisor said if something else happens, whatever to-
These all happened, you may have seen, still protesting them, I'm assuming.
Yep, and then I was there for a few hours and then, um, yeah, the cops ended up just doing, they're mining their own business, literally, on the street doing whatever. And didn't really talk to them after that. A little bit after just antagonistically, but, uh, physically, no, they, I think they learned that they needed to back off. At that point, but that's too late.
He was laughing too, wasn't he?
He was laughing, no.
Were you there?
No, well, I watched it. She was live streaming it. He was like laughing. It was just a very strange. Oh, thank you, A C Grimson. Appreciate it.
So what we're gonna end up doing is we'll contact Central Division, which is where this occurred. And then, because it's been a month, well, it's over.
I also have been bouncing around and they keep sending me to-
Yeah. Yeah, it was Tim that finally, we just found out this week. Okay, so, but I just got that from him because we went to northeast, yeah, yeah, and so.
So, either way, it's gonna go back to Central Division. Even if I, we did, let's say I did a report right now, which I'm not doing right now.
Okay.
Even if I did a report right now, it's still go back to Central because that's the investigating division.
Okay.
So we're gonna end up calling down there. It's been a month. We'll talk to detectives and whoever else we need to talk to, figure out what we need to do. And then more than likely, the easiest way would be to facilitate a meeting with either the investigating officer, so like a detective or a patrol officer, somebody that can actually sit down and help you write the, or them write the report on your behalf. Um, I just don't know how they're gonna want to take the report.
Okay.
They're going to do something. I just don't know how they're gonna facilitate that, if that makes sense.
Okay, yeah, yeah, yeah.
So, are you a business card right now? And I'll kind of outline that. But, um, what I was getting at earlier was the information I got from Tim, which, like I said, I'm the one that gave Tim the information. Originally, it was a information request for something that is outside of our purview when it comes to their admin stuff. It was like Film LA stuff, which they have the right to refuse whatever. What I understood it as was a CEPR request, so obviously you know what a CEPR request is. That's why I had given Tim all that information, so if that's what you guys were looking for. So this is totally different than what Tim had given, right?
I didn't get that information. I just got the, um, all he gave me was the film permit and to call the two-one-three number, which I have, and there's no answer. I didn't get any further information. So whatever, I would like to have the information that you sent, Tim.
You can't have that, but you can have, you can get a, the receiver request.
That's what I mean, yeah.
But that information is-
It's not needed.
I mean, it's not gonna do anything for this situation.
Okay. Well, I'm still learning procedure because now I know.
So retired guys are not active officers.
Right, right. That's what we learned. Sure, hi.
I'm not saying, does this mean anything that you said, right? So don't, don't confuse what I'm saying. Um, they're not active officers, so like you made a complaint against me, it would go to Internal Affairs. Uh, it goes different places because I'm an active officer. Because they are not active, they are essentially hired by the productions.
But we didn't know that, that, this is like our own investigating, figuring out who he was even.
So Sony and whoever else hires these guys, so-
Scientology.
Let's just say they, I think they have their own production company.
They do.
Therefore, that company is liable for whatever they, they do at scene. If, if the officers, I'm calling them officers, but if these retired traffic enforcement people, that's what they are, they're just allowed to wear this uniform. They do something, culpability is on that, um, particular entity that hires them.
So she would be able to sue Scientology for the, like-
Sue, but you would be able to seek legal ramifications.
Got it.
You can do whatever you want outside.
But that, it's for them to do, okay, I see what you're saying. It's not LAPD, is what you're saying.
It's, yeah, the liability is not on LAPD and it's even-
Or the city.
It's even on the permit when they sign their, their work permit. So for example, I, I work Dodgers off duty. I get to wear my uniform at Dodger Stadium. If I do something, it's a little different because I'm active, but let's just say I don't do anything nefarious or that breaks policy with the department. I don't know. I, um, I bump into somebody and they fall, right, accidentally. Live, the, they would sue Dodger Stadium, my employer at the time, right?
Okay, uh, I see, right. I see what you're saying. See, this is a learning curve for all of us in case there's anything in the future.
It looks like they're LAPD officers, but they're not. They're retired officers that don't have police power. They're allowed to wear the uniform to look like this. It's on the L M C section.
So he can't.
So then when I called the supervisor, how would that go?
So the supervisor essentially would come out.
Over the area, not directly over those cops or something?
Right, so you're essentially calling for a battery investigation.
Right, okay, okay.
Knowing what I know now.
Right, right, right.
You're calling for-
And that makes sense for what happened.
Right, so the super, you're calling for a supervisor for a filming location essentially. It would be the equivalent to like if they were a security guard.
Right.
So if they were an active officer, it'd be slightly different because then you could make a complaint against them and it would go to their command and then Internal Affairs.
And that's what we thought it was for the longest until we found out, yeah.
And so I did the research and I was like, oh, he's off duty. And so I had to do all that.
Yeah, yeah.
And I thought it was BSIS. We went to BSIS and they're like, no. So that's why we went to Tim. He's like, no, it's here. So that's why we're here. It's very confusing.
Fortunately, I would rather deal with this with Scientology. If they are the ones responsible for this behavior, which they would be anyways, because this is why.
We have two different, we have two different things. You have every right to go do that, right? Like, that's, that's on you.
But there's still the criminal complaint.
But there's still a different portion of this, which is a full battery. Totally separate from the issue of like discourtesy, whatever, whatever you want to say, right? The other issue is, is battery that possibly occurred.
Yeah.
Um, so, that's where investigators, like detectives, Central Division would have to do their investigation, follow up with you, all that stuff.
Do we need to go there now to follow through or like how should we do that?
This is what I'm gonna, I'm gonna get all your information in a second. So the way I would suggest doing this is just let, let us, let me call Central Division, see how they want to facilitate and handle this. And then I will contact you or somebody from there will contact you. And then that way they can set up either an interview at the, like the best place, like where do you live?
The East Hollywood area.
Okay, so not too far, right?
Yeah, yeah.
So, um, I think that's the easiest way to handle this at this point and, you know.
Could they meet her here instead of having to go to Central?
Well, I don't know if they can meet right now.
No, I mean, but, I mean, say if she ever wants, they do meet, can we meet here instead of over there? Because it's a little scary over there. Yeah, you'd rather meet here. Yeah, because-
Station or whatever, whatever they use. Um, alright, do you have your ID?
Let me, I'm gonna mute guys. Okay, it's getting personal. Yeah, I'm gonna have to go through it all, because I wanna get that too.
Are you muted?
Not anymore, because I thought you were giving, yeah, you were giving your.
I'm gonna ask her for.
Okay, hold on, I'm gonna.
You good, are you recording?
Yep.
So, um, so I think that's the easiest way to facilitate this one, this point.
I agree, I agree, I'm sorry, I snapped, I've literally dealt with so many police officers internally on all the streets, and some of them are amazing, and I'm like, thank you, wow, that was easy. And so I, I don't know who I'm like going up against, who already has like pre, you know, heard ideas of who I am, um.
But not only, not only that.
Scientology has literally just made me lose my job and everything, so.
But let's even go a step back, so I think one of the things is too, is that people don't realize when it's high control groups like Scientology, they all, her, like, they're not allowed to talk to cops, they're not allowed to report crimes, they're not allowed to do anything. So it's very new to her, she's only starting to report what's happened to her recently, and so it's very intimidating and frightening, and so.
And I don't wanna be that way.
And I think there's just not enough sense, I don't know if the, um, officers are trained enough to deal with victims of high, um, you know, high control groups, and what they go through, so, you know, like, the typical, like, you know, you know, we know, like, the, you know, like, you're just doing your job, I get it, but they need to be handled differently, because they, they've never been allowed to talk to a cop, so they wanna see a friendly face.
You want me to give you some advice then?
Yes.
As her advocate, that should have been the first thing you told me.
That's true, you're right, I will take that criticism, yes, you're right.
And it's not to criticize you, it's just.
No, it's true.
The reason why is because I'm trying to get to certain things, obviously, I'm trying to cut through what your emotions are, meaning, like, I'm not trying to dismiss them, but if I'm like playing into it so much, we're not getting anywhere, right?
Yeah.
So I think, um, everybody has a, everybody has a different tactic and style, right?
No, but you're right, it should start off with that in the future, yeah.
This is, this is what we're going through, this is why.
You have done that, actually.
I do, I know. It's just that she stepped up forward this time, I know, so. And I'm letting her fly, like, like she's starting to get her wings and starting, she comes to the police commission meetings, so, but you're right, but, yeah, I just think that there's not enough training for the high, this kind of thing, she's never been allowed to talk to police.
Get to that point, like, I don't know, like, verbally you can't explain yourself, carry a card with you, like, I've seen people carrying like cards.
That's a good idea too.
Like autism or whatever, and then.
That's a great idea.
I'm actually gonna do that today.
Yes.
That's such an amazing.
It's an amazing idea.
It's on Goldenrod too.
So I've had that where people will hand me a, a card with like, um, their disability on it, and it's not to like explain their disability, it's just like, hey, I'm non-verbal, or I have tips or whatever.
Or I have PTSD, yes.
That's actually such a good.
Right, I come from a high control group, that's amazing, that's, that's great.
That's all there is to it.
Right, it doesn't have to be like, don't, don't make it two paragraphs, but I'm just saying.
No, just a little card.
Little card, like a business card.
Yeah.
And please be extra sensitive, right, because that's what she, they need, and I think it's a good idea, because I think most officers would be sensitive if you let, you know, if they, if they knew, right, I guess, um, you know, like, but, because I know there's, that's, that's, that's the barrier, like, they're dealing with the public, and, but they're not trained as much, you're not really trained in high control group, they need to be.
And also in, in what I've been discovering and all of that, is that they've been, Scientology has been safe pointing the city for fifty, sixty years now, so the city, to me, there's been pockets where there's certain groups, like Northeast Division, in certain areas, where the police officers are already resentful and dismissive of any Scientology approach.
Because they've only been hearing one side of it.
I'm sure you know about it.
No, but now they're getting another side of it, because.
We're unsafe pointing at all, and so it's, it's just a little.
But even with the film unit too, like, they film at your, at, you guys film at their, um, centers, like, I have, uh, you know, like, so that, I just found out, and that's like.
That's what I mean, so it's just, and, and soon the city and everybody, they're not gonna be able to.
No.
Work with an organization like this.
No, it's a high control group, highly abusive, um, she grew up very abused.
I'm getting better, I'm learning to communicate better, but there's just some people that I will not communicate with when I see there's a certain, I'm like, and so that got triggered by that, but.
Yeah. See, we worked, I'm glad you guys worked it out, but, um, I love the idea of the card, and I will do that, I'll take that too, like, from the beginning, you're like, yeah, I'll just say that from the, the moment.
Is it really good?
Yeah, it is, oh, thanks, so I'll give credit for that.
I wanna like write it how I feel good about it.
Yeah, like your own words. And then maybe just, yeah, because, um, she was born and raised in traffic, and, you know, abused, horribly abused by Scientology, horribly abused. And so I'm not a professional advocate, I'm just like someone who has joined, I heard her story, and I'm like, I am forever, you know, like, gonna fight this battle. So, but I'm, I'm happy to learn and train and new, learn new, um, things too, because I think that makes sense, and then get a car where I can even pass out something too, or like, you know, if she's not with me, but, um, it needs to, but there needs to be a, an understanding, and you guys are, like, the, L A P D's gonna know us, because we're coming here for all these things, but, um, but it may not just be Scientology, there may be other high control groups too, it needs to be.
So, this particular card is not, like, don't, don't call that a nine-one-one, alright, that's just my business card. Um, if you need, obviously, you need emergency assistance, don't call that.
Yeah.
Um, as far as film LA, like I said, the only information I give to Tim, other than what we talked about, is just, uh, which anybody can look up, you can just type it in like Google, and just put secret request, and then they'll ask, again, call the number. Whatever it is that you're asking for, I don't know what you're asking for, but let's just say you ask for something, they'll be able to provide you with a yes or no, or how to receive it, or, yes, you can receive portions of this.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so whatever that.
Happens all the time, I do a lot of CPR requests. Oh, I do so many of them, yes, that's my.
Yeah, so it's the same number.
Because we're trying to learn all these processes, and, yeah.
So.
Okay, and so now I'll just wait until I.
Somebody will call you, whether it's me, Central Division, somebody will call you back.
Okay, cool.
Can I ask a favor from you though, like, if you're, when you call them, can you please let them know that she, she's a wonderful, you know, she's a victim of so, for her whole life, she's been victimized, and she really needs somebody that can be sensitive and understand, she comes from a high control group, she came across this unexpectedly, um, this high control group in a street where they were abusing their people, they made their people stand like statues for five hours, no breaks, they couldn't, the one lady was crying, almost like, they weren't even allowed to go to the bathroom, their people, and the, the, any officer you talk to who's gonna be talking to her, to please just, uh, understand that even if she gets triggered, that she's a victim, that really needs to be heard.
So I can't promise that, the only reason I can't promise it is because I don't know who's gonna handle this at some point.
No, I know, but I mean, but you can tell them, like, when you pass it on, right, you can put that.
I can warn them about, like.
To please be sensitive, yeah, yeah, that's all I'm asking from you.
At some point, you're gonna meet somebody that we haven't talked with, right?
Right.
And I'll have my cards.
Yeah, we're gonna get the cards, and I'll, or phone with you, alright, I'll start off, right, like, before we start, yeah.
As soon as I leave here right now, I'm gonna go back upstairs, I'm gonna call Central Division, kinda just talk to them about what occurred, um, and then see how they want me to handle it specifically, um, no matter what, I will, I'll, uh, uh, just to make it easier, no matter what, I will call you and let you know what they, they tell me.
Thank you.
So if they tell me to, to me specifically to do the report, and then they'll follow up with you, like the normal investigation, or they'll have her call so-and-so, and they'll, whatever they ask us to do, um, we'll facilitate that.
Perfect.
And I'll let you know.
And I want you to know, I know it was.
Rocco or?
Uh, Rocha.
Rocha.
It was a bumpy start, but she is the most sweetest, funniest, loving, amazing, talented person you'd ever wanna meet, like, you get to know Laura.
I just get spicy.
You will, she's spicy and she's fiery, but comes from passion, but she is so amazing, and her parents are being held captive, she, she's not allowed to see her dad, her dad won't see her, even though she's. And he has to turn around and run in. Because they're not allowed to be connected, to be, like, she's not allowed.
I'm forty years old, why can't my dad come and just.
Say hi, they're not allowed, so, it gets very emotional.
It's not just my dad, it's my mom and him at, at the headquarters, I was born and raised, it's my whole life, I know what they're doing.
Right.
I've lost everything, so I don't care, but I'm not gonna have a fucking cop assaulting me when I'm there to just be like.
And this is huge for her to be able to stand up for herself.
That's not illegal, I'm not illegal.
But she was never allowed to do this, she was not, and this is all new to her.
They're not allowed to go to police, they really have policies that say, if you go to outside authorities for help, or to report crime, you will be excommunicated yourself.
That's why it took the Masterson, um, victim so long, and he's still, Danny Masterson's still a Scientologist in good standing, they were excommunicated for going to the police to, for justice. And so, but, um, you'll get that, like, she is, yeah, she's amazing, and so, I just want you to know that.
Um, do you?
Always, you're always amazing even.
The best number to reach you at?
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate it, yeah, I'm gonna take your, um, advice, thank you. You look familiar to me though, I feel like I know you, I feel like I met you.
I do.
I know him. You don't do the, you don't do the First Amendment permits, right, because we wanna get into, like, we had one of those.
No, we're gonna sing off, I don't.
Different, that's priest, okay?
Oh yeah, you know, offer priest?
Yeah, for my, we had a first, to, on Father's Day, we wanted her to be able to sing to her dad outside of Blue, because they won't let her see him. And so we got a permit, so she can set up and sing.
You guys did it?
Yep, it was amazing, it was so amazing.
Uh, offer priest, so, that works with us, so.
Yeah, yeah, it was so beautiful that day. Thank you, officer, thanks. Yeah, Marie, well, I just.
Thank you, officer.
Thank you, no, I love you, you know, where, so, I'll, I'll see, I'll see Marie says, a relaxing coffee time for you and Laura, two advocate angels. I'll give it to these two advocate angels.
Thank you, Chad, for being here, and listening to us go through these fucking tedious things.
But these are, these are how it gets done, that takes so much courage, Laura. Huh? Hold on. It does take a lot of courage.
It takes a lot of my energy, and your energy, and you dread it all.
It's hard, it's hard to see people you care about go through that. Oh yeah, here, I'll hold it more. So, yeah, okay.
Let yourself have.
It's like, um.
Yeah, no, it's important to thank you.
Yeah, no, I'm here for you, and I'm glad we didn't have to go to Skid Row.
I feel safe when it's with me, so.
Awesome, well, I'm glad that, I love it, well, I'm gonna take his advice, because I think that was solid advice for you to have the card, and for me to straight up, yeah, that was really smart.
Just having a card, it's like, hey, I may be a little difficult sometimes to talk to when I'm talking about this situation, I was born and raised, something that.
Yeah, I, right, like, I have P A T S, right, like, I, I am from a control, yes.
Even if I don't, maybe I have a break thing, I'm like, okay, I decided to give it to you just in case.
Yeah, I think that's an amazing idea. It is, Vista Print does it, Rocha, yeah, no, that was solid, and I'm gonna follow that too, because, yeah, he was a little, yeah, and I, I understand, because I, I've been around cops my entire life. Like, my whole life I've been around, so I, see, I, I, when I see them acting like that, but I can see from your point of view how bad, like, scary that would be, I'm just so used to it. Yeah, I was, what.
He doesn't, he's like me, like, we both didn't mean, but we were a little.
Yeah, yeah, you both, yeah, and so, but you know what, we broke through it, and you know what, he's gonna remember it, he's gonna change his tactics, and then you're gonna see that you were strong enough to get, you know, him to, you know, like.
It's more, it's more important, it's just more meaningful and understanding.
Yeah, so that was great.
Non-stop.
This was, yeah, what an amazing day though, like, it's just, I, I just, I don't know, like, everything, I just feel like so, like, I don't know, like, proud and happy to be part of your journey in this, like, like, I can't explain it.
So much work.
Like, I know, but I, it's, but every second of it, it's worth it, but, but to be part of it, to be.
The ups and downs, the sad, the happy, the funny.
I know, but to see you, and, and seeing you grow, and seeing you, we are learning the system, because like, I know only a certain amount, but we're really learning, like, this whole aspect, we didn't know about the film, but now we're gonna go after their film, like, like, okay, because we did so much on the street, now we're gonna go after their filming.
So now we're just.
Yeah, we might have to go for.
And, I don't know, I feel like whoever called him, Tim, or whatever, maybe Tim has a really good relationship with Scientology and the film thing, so.
No, he wasn't being, I don't think he, oh, yeah, maybe, oh, yeah, yeah, you're, I see what you're saying. Right, because he's been working with them.
For so long, that he's probably like, uh.
So we gotta work with them too.
Exactly.
We gotta work with them. Yeah, see, we're getting it, yeah.
Tim, we're on our way to the.
No.
To the van.
Oi, 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 Marie, you, uh, wants a treat to coffee, but do we.
Hi, Ozzy, 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 Ozzy.
Wait, 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 do we wanna go back and get coffee at the film thing, or?
No.
Okay, might have to do it, may, had to do it the next time then?
Yeah, because I was.
Unless you wanna go somewhere, oh, that's right. Well, there could be iced tea or something, it could be something, okay, she wants to hold off, Marie.
I wanna go in my van.
I'll get her something.
My blueberries and my hot tea, I wanna hot chamomile.
Well, we could do that.
It's like, by the time we go back there, then we're gonna, she's gonna get the call, and then we're gonna have to rush back to the van.
But Marie did it to remind me that Marie's treating, like, wait, we gotta, maybe when we go, we're, uh, next week, when we go, we get our teas or whatever in the morning, okay, so.
Yeah.
Although I could go for a pumpkin latte, I might.
I mean, I like anything steamed and.
Just two hookers going for a stroll, there's three of us here, what's wrong with you, can't you count? There's three of us, learn to count.
Somebody say two hookers going for a stroll?
Yes, yeah, like, the devil, just two hookers going for a stroll.
I have not had any sex, thank you very much.
Yeah, I'm not.
And I've not been paid for any sex.
Yeah, me neither, never have in my life, I mean, I've had sex, but, but, uh, I've never been paid for. I think you're on the wrong, I think you're on the wrong stream, you're looking for something else, yeah, that ain't gonna be here. Yeah, hi, I'm, I'm too tired for all that, I was like, oh, neat, I just wanna see in the, can I look, like, from here?
Welding?
Can I look in the? Is that what you're doing?
Burning some bolts?
Burning some bolts out, yeah.
But thank you for keeping our, yeah, yeah, and keeping our city. Oh, wow, we got fire, and fire.
Hard at work, Los Angeles, true workers.
Shout out, to our workers, thanks, guys.
Real workers, doing the real dog.
That's a cool smell though, water and power, I love it, okay, yeah, I like seeing. Okay, that's hot, not that I don't have attractions, like, that was hot, some hot guy with a, with a welder, hardworking man, yeah, that's very attractive. I don't like little whiny beta babies that, you know, cry every minute, they look like tough masculine men. Real men. Real men eat quiche, but they don't cry every five minutes. I know, oh.
I'm so glad I got to come today to the.
I know, yeah, thank you for doing that.
I'm learning, you know, you and from you.
I was like, thanks, I know, it's so awesome. I know, there's so much, you just, alright, but on the, it's, yeah, yeah, remember that? Some more men working? Okay, it's not thirty-five, the, oops. I lost my card though, my transit card, I hope they let me in, like, I don't know what happened.
You lost your what?
My, my, uh, transit, my card, it's like, maybe it's, probably fell on my table. Uh, but you needed to open up the gate, so I'm just gonna say, hopefully someone's there, I'm gonna like, open up the gate.
Just be like, my card's in the.
I probably fell, yeah, I probably fell on my table, or, you know.
You know what, I could also take the train back to Texas, oh.
Oops, sorry, oh, yeah, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Yeah, well, call them, I bet you it's ready right now. What did they say, just told you, uh, goes up?
There we go. Why is that?
What'd he say?
Oh, don't you love it, yeah, I just wanted oil change, oh, by the way, you need brakes, you need it or this.
But then, okay, so then what? So I, I don't know. You were saying you need a, uh, you need a, get the brakes changed, right, like, soon, or you're just saying, you're saying they're bad?
Look at that one.
Okay, but I mean, I'll just tell you, I'm just saying, I have a great.
Alright, I love you guys. Bye, love you. Did my great job.
I'll be watching your stream to make sure you're safe.
Yeah, I'm gonna get off.
Bye chat, bye chat.
Bye, oh.
Always for your knowledge and.
Hope I didn't hit your ear too hard, okay.
A little wagon, oh, it's like Mexico.
Where?
No more war, we want peace.
Yes, I, I want, I am not a warmonger. Uh, I hate war. But, um, yes.
We're gonna be watching you.
Okay, I'm gonna get off, yeah, I'm gonna get off, and once I get down there, just, but, yes, there's so much.
I say you stay on until you're solid, until you're on home or whatever.
Well, it dies in there anyway, but, I'll be alright.
Okay, love you, I'll, I'll call you later.
Yes, and, and, yeah, he says he's gonna call you within a half hour, hopefully.
Yeah.
So I'm glad he turned it around.
Okay, bye.
Bye. Okay, guys, hopefully they let me into the subway. Oh, wait, wait, Laura. I thi, we gotta get Dan, I, I just, I think we need to go to IKEA, get Swedish meatballs, and do one little film on, um, his sensitivity, you know, this thing, and do one little, you know, and then you be the ext, like, saying, "Okay, I need officers", and then we're gonna turn it into LAPD, and we're like, I want, we're gonna push for that to be shown in training.
Where, where that I should do the...
Yeah, you should narrate, like, we should write a, like, you know, like, write, we could...
In IKEA?
Yeah, 'cause we have the sets, it's a sets, there.
You tell me when and where, and I'll be...
All right, let's do it, we'll have to talk to Dan when he gets back. Yes. Bye! Right, guys, that'd be so awesome. What'd I hit? That'd be so awesome, yeah, we're gonna start, I've been always, I almost did, like, I was... They, like, COVID hit or whatever, but we're gonna do training films for autism. Because, you know, people who are autistic are more like, they have, like, with all the police shootings, a lot, like, uh, like, a, 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 a large number or percentage are autistic. And so, because there's not a whole lot of training, they're starting to get better training with how to deal with people who have autism. Um, because sometimes, like, you know, like, if you sell, ask an autistic person or someone on the spectrum, like, "Show me your hands", they're gonna come and they're gonna present their hands to you. And, but for the police, they, they take any kind of approach as hostility, okay? And so there needs to be better understanding, uh, I think we're kinda getting there, but not far enough, but I think there needs to be a lot better understanding too of these high-control groups, oh, shoot. Let me see if I ha, right, IKEA movie production, let me see if I have a... Okay, nope. Oh, Marie, oh, I was wondering where you were, it's like, are you back with us now? Were you on a nice vacation? I think I missed a lot of the chat, and I'm sorry, guys. I need to see someone who can let me in. Just gonna wait, oh, man. Hmm, thing's open over there. It's still open, I wonder if I could... Maybe they'll stay, oh, no, closed. I, no, I have a card, like... I ride free. But, um, I, 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 my card's not with me, I don't know if it dropped out of my thing, like, at home. I hope not, otherwise I'd have to get a replacement. Oh, shoot. No, I'm gonna do it. I might just have to go see, wait. I can't just get a replacement card right now, I'm waiting to see if any of the personnel come. Yeah, it says the subway, but I have a free, I lost my card. Uh-huh. Oh, oh, thank you.
Gotta go quick, though, boy.
Ah, I don't know if I can get in there that quick, this... Thank you so much, I do have the card, I just, I lost it. I know, I have that, I, I lost my access card, I...
I tried to save a little money, and I get the free twenty dollars.
Yeah, I have the free one, yeah.
I'm not saving, so sometimes I just don't do it.
Yeah, I mean, I'll tell them if I see them down there, you too, thank you so much for letting me in, thank you. I hope it's home, I hope it didn't fall out on the street. It was my stupidity for having it in the side pocket. Yes, he was kind, thankfully. Oh, here we go. Hi, take your time, I'm not in a rush. Have a good one, I got it. Oh, thank you. Have a good day.
Have a good day, thanks, God bless you.
God bless you too.
Okie dokie.
Long day, kinda, but it's been great. So glad that Jen came. I've been, I've had like seven hours of sleep in two, in forty-eight hours, I don't know, it's just so much, doing so much. Okay, guys, I'm probably gonna lose you, 'cause it, when you get in here, it seems like it stops, I'm gonna try to keep on. But if you, if I'm, if, it usually goes off. Which, in the subways here, they should have it where? It's always. There's always Wi, excuse me, Wi-Fi. I think they're working on that. I should've gone to Grand Central Market and just picked up that, I would've only needed one train, uh... Oh, thank you, Antix. I love that, yeah, um, teamwork is dream work, it's true. And it's just, I don't know, I get really sentimental seeing Laura just asserting herself, but also being able to, you know, work and, like, with it, and just, I don't know, she's just, it's just amazing to see. It's really amazing to be a part of, it makes me know how important all this, like, the meetings and the working and the building, the rapport, and trying to build relationships. It matters, and so to see it, and then hopefully that officer, he'll be, like, he'll maybe think a little differently next time, but, yeah, the card's such a great idea. Audit needs a raise. Well, I, I, I'm grateful for that cup of coffee, I'm gonna go get, actually, I'll probably go get it. I'm gonna get my, I'll get her, what's she what, a hot chamomile tea, I'll get her that. It is healing, it's very healing, and it's just very, for her, but even, I think for all of us, like, to see the progress. And now we're getting into another whole area arena, you know, it's like it's growing. It's not just street permits anymore, now we're getting into the movie permits, which we never knew anything about, so it's like learning all that, you know? And so that's gonna be interesting, and then I really wanna do the IKEA film shoots, so, you know, and training and all that stuff, and, and so it feels like it's growing. I wonder if Film LA has permits, 'cause they're not really the city, they're just kind of like contracted, so I don't know. We'll see, we'll figure it out, it'll become apparent. You keep your card, that's a good idea. No one will grab it, oh my god, you're so funny. Oh, man, that's a great idea, I should've, I just kept it in my purse, but then I went, and I got, I'm like, "Oh, man, where is it?". Okay, guys, I'm gonna get off now that the train is here, 'cause it always dies here. So thank you all, my love to you all. Yeah, it's nice, this is the newer part, the next part, the next one is not so nice. It's like, but this part is, but guys, love y'all, you're gonna have one. Guys, I know, that's where I should've done. Take it out. All right, guys, I love y'all, and thank you all for everything. Mod, sitting there with us, as you see, I'm so sorry you didn't get in, I don't know what happened, but, next time. Oh, no, we can't get discouraged, man, guys, and I know you're going through some tough stuff, as you see, and don't think that we don't see you, we do. And you're still here with a positive attitude, and still here for the kids, so you're amazing. And, it's hope, Marie, and so, sorry being late. All right, I love you guys.